Welcome everyone to the University Heights City Council Meeting. This is December thirteenth, we are in Horn School. First order is to roll call all the council members with the exception of Jerry who will not be phoned. And Chris Lyons is here representing the police department since Ken is still on vacation. Lori will be here later. Yeah. Okay. The first, the first item on the agenda is the approval of minutes and we have three sets, November fifteenth, November twenty-ninth, and November thirtieth. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes?
Move to approve all three of those minutes.
Do I have a second?
A second.
You have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, I'd like to carve out November twenty-ninth.
Oh, okay.
Is there a second to carve out, well, to go back to individually, individually approving the minutes? Is there a second?
No, I'll second you.
Thank you. There is a second to restore.
Okay. So, do I have a motion and a second to approve the November fifteenth minutes?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay. Motion and second, any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Yes. Okay, so approved. Okay, can I have a motion to approve the November twenty-ninth minutes?
So move.
We have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second, further discussion?
I second.
No, Jim, right here.
Okay, done. Okay. No discussion?
Pardon?
No discussion.
You don't want to make any changes?
Well, is this the one where we have, hold on a minute. Is this the envisioning one?
No.
And it's on the thirtieth.
No.
Oh, on the thirtieth. Okay. Fine. Yeah. No discussion on the twenty-ninth, Mr. Mayor?
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Okay. Right. Okay. I have a motion to approve the November thirtieth minutes.
Move to approve November thirtieth?
Second.
I have a motion and a second. Discussion?
I will not be supporting the minutes of the thirteenth, the twenty-ninth, on account of I've made efforts to reach out to a friendly, a resolution to the, to the minutes, therefore, I will not be supporting this evening since the resolute, since the internal efforts to resolve this were, went nowhere.
Any further discussion?
So we have a, we have a- I think Jerry does.
Jerry, do you have a, do you have anything to say about the minutes for November thirtieth?
Would you expand on that a moment, please? I, I don't have them right here.
He asked me, he asked if you'd expand on that.
I reached out to the mayor requesting that certain information be deleted as it was not material or relevant to the reporting of the minutes, and he declined. He did however, agree to amend other language, and so I find it to be satisfactory, however, I still cannot vote for the remainder of the minutes.
Because of that one part?
I don't know what part you're referring to.
The, the part that's relevant to the time, the-
Time has never been tracked. I have, as a matter of fact, that was part of the rationale I provided to the mayor. I let him know that I have been at every envisioning meeting since the inception of the program. I have assisted Dottie in doing research, coordination of facilities. As a matter of fact, I got into trouble for, what is it, contacting Oaknell to get facilities for the envisioning program, yet the mayor thought it was important to make annotations of a brief stay at this meeting, therefore, I find that I cannot support this as, as it breaks from precedent of prior reporting of the minutes.
So we all did was, all we did, go ahead, go ahead Jerry.
To the extent that Sylvia thinks it may be punitive, I-
Jerry, I would, I would urge you to please don't think for me, I, I, please, please speak on your first person, we would really appreciate that.
No, I think, I'm trying to take another person's perspective on this Sylvia, and that's yours, and if it was me, I'd feel the same way, if that helps, but if I might continue. To the extent that it might appear punitive, I, I agree that it, it doesn't serve any purpose on being there really. Sylvia has been, has, has taken part in most of these activities, and if it, if it feels punitive, I think that we might want to change that way.
I would second the motion to change that.
This isn't no, excuse me, this isn't no way punitive. I, you know, the meeting started, I didn't see you there, I turned around and you were there, I turned around again a few minutes later and you were gone, and that's all I reported. I was just reporting what I saw. For some reason, you, you wanted to take issue about, I said approximately ten minutes, and I didn't, I didn't say that you came in and left, and I, I just felt that was, that was enough, so. Let's, is there any further discussion? Let's just, can we just take-
I think my bottom line is, I just want the record to be accurate, and I find that the, the timing, the tracking of time has not been done for any other counselor, as a matter of fact, initially, the minutes didn't reflect that another counselor had come in late. I was single last in this minute recording. So in any event, I'm ready to close discussion if there, Mr. Mayor, if you're willing to go forward.
I am willing to go forward. Okay.
Jerry, do you have any other comments that you want to make?
No, I, I think that's what I have today, and I, I-
I appreciate them, thank you.
Okay. All right. So, all in favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
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 Aye. Opposed?
Aye. I oppose.
I, I would oppose too, while we have these circumstances.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you Jerry.
Okay, so I'm going to open a public hearing on a moratorium on issuing permits for and on sitting placing, constructing, erecting, placing, or modifying of towers, antennas, or other transmission equipment related to wireless telecommunications services or technology to allow the city council time to consider changes to or enactment of city ordinances. So I'm opening the public hearing. Are there any public comments on this issue? Not hearing any public comments, I'm going to close the hearing. And Steve, you want to read the resolution?
Yeah, sure, or at least I'll describe it. So, this is an issue that the council has talked about a couple of times, Sylvia has brought this up, going back as far as I think September, maybe August, but in any event, there have been approaches to the city about placing communications towers or antennas on existing structures like telephone poles, or street lamps, or traffic lights to further enhance propagation of wireless signals. I think proximity to UIHC and particularly Kinnick Stadium has something to do with that, the attention the University Heights might get. In any event, the council adopted a resolution at the last meeting, last regular monthly meeting, to allow Josiah as a city engineer to come up with a, an application process in case somebody was knocking at the door right then to file an application for such a, a tower or that kind of equipment. And since then, Josiah and I and Sylvia have worked on a draft ordinance related to this issue, and we're continuing to work on it. We, my suggestion, came up with the notion of asking the council to just enact a moratorium to put everything on hold, give us just a little time to come up with some modifications to our draft ordinance and bring it back to the council in January. The moratorium extends to April one, which would give the council the opportunity to have three readings of an ordinance. It also, of course, permits the council to amend, modify, extend, shorten that moratorium time. There hasn't been any, anyone really sort of breathing down the city's neck, so to speak, to, to place a particular tower, but there have been some inquiries, and, and I think this moratorium would give the council an opportunity to consider competing values, to get a fee structure in place, and just be able to take on applications and consider them fairly, in a better way. So that's the purpose of the, of the resolution sixteen sixty.
I'd move adoption of resolution sixteen sixty four.
A second.
Or sixty, sorry, excuse me. Okay.
Motion and a second, is there, is there any discussion?
I, the only question I was going to ask is, is anybody, have we been approached by anybody, and if we haven't, that's good.
And I would ask, does this give us enough time to build the resolution? I mean, build the standards and build what we need built?
We've been working on them, right? So if, if, for the public's knowledge, in 2015 in April, we were approached by INS to install certain cable undergrounds for commercial use, and as some of you here recollect, we almost did so freely, without any compensation. My research indicates that right of way is valuable city property. Many cities have controls and regulations that require that a city be compensated for the use of such access and use and enjoyment. So, at the, I've been working with Josiah and Steve to address that, since we did have in a particular entity inquire, make inquiry as to the availability of the city engaging in a transact, in a permitting site of, of certain facilities. We don't know where that's going, we don't have an actual application for entry, but we're, we're trying to be prepared so that we don't end up where we were in April of 2015, when we almost gave away free access to valuable city assets.
My question remains, does April one give us enough time to do what we have to do to get the requirements that we need? And I know we don't have to reinvest a real lot of community fund this, but-
That's right. Let me, Steve, can you-
Is April first going to be, is April first going to be sufficient?
Jerry, this is Steve. So Josiah and I and Sylvia talked about that timeframe, and more particularly a January timeframe, because we've got a draft ordinance in the works, and we think that January gives us enough time to prepare an ordinance for council consideration the first time. In terms of the council's desire to explore the issue, look at the ordinance, revise it, I think it gives you plenty of time, but the moratorium does specifically provide that it can be extended, and I think if the council is working in good faith and needs to extend that, I don't have any, any legal problem with that. So, that'd be my answer.
Thank you.
Is there any further discussion?
Lane?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Cassada?
Aye.
Haber Camp?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Carrie?
Okay, so, no one has signed up to speak for public input tonight, so I'm going to adjust the, the agenda just a little bit. I'm going to move Steve Smith from Johnson County Refuge to come up and speak, and Sylvia, do you want to, do you want to introduce him, what this is about?
Yes, I'd like to introduce our first guest tonight, which is Steve, who is the owner and operator of Johnson County Refuge Inc., who is our garbage disposal, our recycling disposal, and also our leaf vacuuming service. Steve and I have been meeting, I'm having phone conversations to discuss the proposal, which is that resolution, let's see, resolution- Sixteen sixty seven. Sixteen sixty seven, with respect to an increase in recycling, recycling collection fees. And so Steve is here tonight to walk us through the justification for that request, and to the extent that I can supplement information, I will, but Steve is a much better direct source for tonight. So, take it on Steve.
Okay, thanks Sylvia. What's, what's been happening with the recycling is, they have begun to charge us back in 2015 to process, where we had been, we'd been charged several times over the years for the processing, but usually it was only for a couple months at a time, so it, it wasn't a real, real big deal. A company by the name of Republic Waste, a couple years ago bought out the City Card companies, and everything was good for a few months, and after that, they started, they started raising our rates for the processing. And I don't know if, if I gave you this chart and you handed it out or not, I didn't have copies, but in July of 2015, we was paying ten dollars a ton to the process of recycling, and it, they just slowly kept increasing it until in June of 2016, we're paying thirty-eight fifty a ton to, to process the recycling for us. So what's, then they come to us and wanted us to sign a contract in September that, that the, the processing key would go to sixty-five dollars a ton, and then they had a, what they called a matrix, a matrix rebate system, that we would, we would get revenue off of, different revenues off of the different products once they, they, according to their plant average of what cardboard and plastic and tin, that was still, us company-wide, we was paying around twelve thousand dollars a month for our processing. Maybe it was a couple weeks to sign a contract, we searched out to try and find somewhere else to go with it. We come up with, in Scott County, Scott County Waste Commission, which has a really nice facility over there with the, with big machines for sorting, and we have taken the stuff there. What was going to happen if we continued with City Card, we was probably going to have to raise probably in the neighborhood of a dollar fifty a house in order to cover their, their cost. They're ma, they use a matrix program over there for, but they look at all the products a little different. We actually, in the last three months, we, we took, the last week in September, we took a few loads over there just to see how it would go, and then October, and November, we have, we have taken everything there, and versus us writing the check out for twelve thousand, they have been actually giving us a check for, for the product. But, it's not enough to, what they're giving us is not enough to, to cover the cost to get it over there. So, what happens is it brings, I've got to figure out that what they're, what they're paying us right now has been, and this fluct, can fluctuate every, every, every month, depending on what they sell stuff for, but we, we thought we was going into it getting seven, eight dollars a ton, but we've actually, the last three months, we got fourteen seventy-five, and then last month, and the month before, we got sixteen oh one. You guys got about forty-five hundred pounds of, of recycling that's coming out of, out of town. What we're getting out of that is, is not enough to cover-
Transportation.
Transportation over there. So what we're, we're asking for is a fifty cent raise in the recycling versus a dollar fifty to keep it here. The easiest thing for us to do would have been just to raise the rates and, and not worry about trucking that for, but I think longevity, we're working with a better place than, and I feel like it's, it's the best place to go right now, and we don't have to raise the rates enough, and we're investing in equipment to be able to transport more, more on our trips to, so that if, if these prices, I believe are probably going to fluctuate a little bit, and if they go down a little bit, we can still cover and not have to, have to ask for raises all the time, but. So that pretty much, we do right now, in the, in the totals, we, we have, and it's not the, I'm guessing you guys about forty-five hundred pounds, we have been picking up oak crests, it's in our, our totals that we've had, or Oaknell, Oaknell, and I, and also several years ago, the city, somebody in the city asked us to do the school out here, so those weights are, in our, in our weights we have right now, those will be, we are, we were putting scale systems on our trucks, so that when we pick up the last house in town, we'll have a, we'll have a accurate weight on what we picked up every, every week, but my thing, we've always put those on there because they're right here, right here in town, or right next to town, and, and meeting the fifty percent goal by 2020 that they had years ago, it was helping you guys, so if you guys would like me to keep that on there, I can keep it on there, or we can pick those up and take the weight off, so it's not something you have to decide, it's, it's for-
When you said fifty cents, do you mean fifty cents per person or per household?
Fifty, I'm sorry, fifty cents. Fifty cents per household, which we're charging for three hundred and sixty-six right now, which would be a hundred and eighty-three dollars a month. So, that's about forty or forty-two dollars a, a-
Fifty for fifty cents per month.
Fifty cents per month.
Per month, okay.
But when I figure out revenue-wise, trying to do my, my calculations, it comes out to a little over forty dollars a, a week, that you guys will pay us more for recycling in town, and then adding on what we're getting out of it, out of it, and then combining with some of the towns, so we don't have to go up any more than that, so.
And so I just, Steve, just to be clear, you and I have the privilege of having wonderful discussions about this, but for the rest of council, the fifty cent increase is actually a reduction from an initial proposed amount that Steve has agreed to absorb, and he will also ensure that he will be installing new scales into his collection equipment, so that University Heights weight is at all times accounted for, and we're not paying any de minimis amounts for the school system or Oaknell. And so I think that's a fair outcome, and I really do appreciate Steve, that you're, that you took my concerns, as well as what I would think would be the majority of council's concerns as well, in keeping accurate records and improving your fleet. I think our folks like to even that our vendors are keeping things up to date and current, so thank you.
And when would this go into effect, Steve?
Effective in December.
Which, you know, I'm hoping to whatever you guys say.
The resolution, now is it effective as of the date of, of approval, so that would be tonight?
Oh, okay. I was looking for a date.
Today is Tuesday, so it's, sorry, it's next week.
Yeah, we do that, then that would be-
Right.
We need to start it on the first of July.
And Jim, I had gotten wind that Republic Service had, was in acquisition mode in the Midwest, and I rolled up to you, email communications information, I think it would need to reflect the contingency point, so.
And then do, you want, you guys have to vote on that, or do you want to talk about the details?
Does anybody have any questions?
Makes perfect sense. I appreciate the work Steve, it's a long term deal.
All right. So I will motion for adoption of resolution sixteen sixty seven.
Second.
Okay. We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Maher?
Aye.
Cassada?
Aye.
Haber Camp?
Aye.
Zimmerman? Jerry?
Can you hear me?
Yeah, now we do.
Now we can.
Yeah. I thought I heard Sylvia say sixteen sixty-two. Is that the resolution number?
We are voting on sixteen sixty-seven.
Sixty-seven, yes. I, I think she says sixty-two, I'm going to misheard it. Aye.
Okay. Lane?
Aye.
Carrie?
Okay. We want to talk about the details and then-
Steve does have another proposal as a result of the several requests from residents to increase the services of leaf vacuuming. Steve has, would like to make the following recommendation or suggestion.
Sylvia had asked me a couple times here this fall, because of the way the leaves are coming down, to, to do an extra leaf vac. We kind of have a, have a policy where we want to be done with leaf vac in it by Thanksgiving, just because of the way the weather goes, and what we have, and the weather can change so fast when we get that, that late. And I, sometimes it's real nice after, after that, I know some places are still going, but, but for us, and leaf vac and not being our, you know, which is something we're doing extra for a couple towns, my crew's got to get ready for, our trucks ready for winter, or, you know, for the, and we don't have a whole lot of time, and it's just, and then I also don't want my guys out there, when it's raining, cold, and, and snowing, trying to suck leaves up. So we kind of, we, we can't really do anything on Saturday, last Saturday before Thanksgiving, because of the football games and things like that, but, so pretty much going maybe later, it's out, but what Lisbon has us do is we, we do leaf vacuuming in the spring, and that might be better. I know we got some trees that leaves don't fall off until, till real late, that we'd never catch anyways, so it might be something to consider, rather than doing another leaf vacuuming, trying to do one late is to, to catch that stuff in the spring. We got plenty of time to, time to think about it, but just something I was thinking about today, since we're doing it there, then our equipment's all, all set, so it's usually something there we do, I think towards the end of April, and then, then the beginning of May, so either one time, I, you know, towards the end of April, might be, might be the best, so if you guys want to consider that, so.
And Steve, I also wanted to just add that you also have engagements with other cities, so the schedule for even trying to be flexible with this was nearly impossible.
It's, yeah, well, and then, that's also, we're going around the football games and, you're trying to figure the, the football games, and we used to do, try to do them on, on Monday, but with the football games and everything going on, it just, the Thursday seems to work out, you know, work out pretty good, and it's always, you know, getting the other town lined up, and then, and put it, and kind of checking you guys out with the football games and things like that, to get the dates set, so.
Thank you so much.
Thanks. Thank you Steve. Thanks again.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is Jeff Maxwell with updates on OUP construction.
weather, primarily the front building, building number one, as we're attempting to try and get our occupancy certificate established, I think that's coming up later in the council agenda. The rear building is framing along as best as can be, all of the concrete on both first and second floors of underground parking are all completed now, so we're completely tightening up the concrete, re-framing on the third floor, on the east half of the building is well underway, and we'll be able to continue the first floor going to the west, so that wood framing and electrical roughhead work is starting as we speak, and we're on schedule and looking forward to moderating while we, before we fix that quadrille again, and questions?
You got it pretty nice in the van, but-
We've had it very nice in the van, but we're very grateful, so.
What are you looking for on the north building for my completion date?
Next fall, late will be our completion date, not the exact date at this time, but lots of work to be done between now and then.
How's it going on our community space?
Community space, I believe they've got another, I was through there again today, I think Sylvia's planning to walk through later on in this week for some other specialty needs and pricing of some other suppliers for the city proclaiming, that she and I are working together on getting keys and access to it. I, I believe they're very, very close with their completion, anticipating closing date very soon.
Keys reminds me of something, yeah. Is it going to be a FOB key system?
I, I have, there is a FOB system, I do have one for Sylvia, I suggested that I give one of them to council-
Right.
That you could all use it and share it back and forth. Sylvia wanted to use it specifically for her meeting that she has, it's not quite scheduled yet, or at least wasn't this morning, but I would suggest if perhaps we may look with the police department, to keep you left in the police department, maybe the, all of the council members would have access to it, and that way you could get in off hours when, when the building's not under construction.
And, are you, do you use a computer program with that FOB system that a lot, you know, that manages, which is what we're doing with the school district right now?
Yes.
To me, that would be absolutely the way to go.
It will log in and report who's entering the building at that point. It will log in and report who's entering the building at that point, I know.
Right, but then you can also create FOBs and assign rights to them, and if somebody loses it, you can just cancel it rather than, or, yeah.
Perfect. That's anyway, I don't, I don't control that or handle that, but the, the system has the capability to do it.
Good.
It's a good system.
Good, yes, no, I would agree.
Jeff, what updates do you have on the last remaining piece of the commercial space? I have residents who are inquiring about the, who's coming on board in that commercial space?
Can they tell you that the activity level in that last two weeks has drastically increased, not real sure what that is all about, or in the holiday season oftentimes, uh, there can be some delays, there are certain people that have asked us to hold off until the first of the year, that they have additional interest, we do have Terry Morrow, who's now involved in our local marketing from a commercial standpoint, her husband has been hired, the name of their maintenance firm slips my mind right now, that they've been hired to handle all of our property management.
Who is this again?
Terry Morrow, with Blank &amp; McCune, she's one of the members of Blank &amp; McCune. So she'll be working alongside with the, uh, TJ with C. B. Ariellis in the Good Morning Fund, but they're more of a, uh, a national-type vendor, uh, whereas Terry is much more locally affiliated, and has a, uh, much local, much closer local pulse on our commercial interest, so, but there aren't any other, uh, any other deals that are signed and, uh, ready to be released as of yet, I'm pretty excited to follow the activity level that started to increase now. Do you want to move on the key FOB to, to allow council to have on that way?
I'm not worried about that now, I just, I just, I didn't want us to be putting in a traditional lock system if we had the ability to do a FOB system, because that's...
You've, you've got complete control of that, any of the community center space, um, the problem are the contractors.
Yeah.
We, we are creatures of, uh, danger, I just got them going through the building and telling another door that was left unlocked, they, they wire them in the open position so they can get through the day, and over that, Comus, they need to check those at the end of the day to secure the building.
I think we're happy to wait until after we close, before we give you keys, so.
I just thought, I just thought of another question, we had addressed this several months ago, on the electrical, as far as having a hookup for a generator in case there's a power failure, and I talked to Jeff at McComas Lucina a couple different times, and he's told me twice that he's going to call somebody, that they're going to call me back, nobody has ever called me back on it. Do you know anything about that, or what?
The, the best thing I could do there is put you in contact with Bo, with Tri-City Electric, he's the, the electrical contractor on the, on both of the buildings.
Okay.
Very familiar with your space and the second building, so he would be the most knowledgeable to talk about, perhaps, what equipments you might have, and how it could be incorporated in, and you're really getting, yeah, so I will do that, would you, Wally, be the contact person?
Well, send me, yeah, just, if you'll send me an email with his contact, then I'll call it and find out what's, what's happening, like with that.
He, he's on-site every day.
Is he?
Great guy, he'd be happy to meet with you, I'd be glad to interview.
Okay, well, yeah, I'll let the truck down, and be gone for a couple days, so.
I'll, I'll make that number available, if you call him during the normal workday, he'll be available, and usually able to communicate with you if you'd like.
I just think that's something we need, I mean, if we have a power failure, and our police don't have any, any communication, uh, that's, that's not a good thing, so, so, okay, thank you.
Yes, sir. Any other questions from anyone that can help with?
The, uh, playground area, we have it all fenced, there's one big rock that looks like it, uh, misplaced or something, and, on the south end of that, playground area, outside the fence.
One lone rock?
Yep. It's big, I tried to pick it up, Jeff, but as you'll see, it's a boulder.
My, my perception of landscape architects has drastically changed, uh, some number of months, and it's just that I'm not familiar, I'll be glad to look.
Would you look at it, yeah, I, I talked to Glenn about it, and, and neither he nor I am.
And it looks like it's removed, or?
It looks like it's intentionally...
Yeah, I can't really, I think it's better to be removed, but, but the problem is, I, I can't tell if the rock went there or they ran out of fencing, I mean, it's...
Is it inside the, the closure?
Nope.
It's on the outside.
Yeah, so keep it looking.
The lone rock.
Yep, you won't miss it.
Okay, I, I've been by it, I just went by it a few moments ago, and checked and verified some of the street signage has now been installed as of today, on the median and such, and, and I noticed for some reason, the, uh, the Hawkeye flag decided to lower itself, by itself, so, I do, I do get the emails either directed from either our president or our mayor on half-mast signals, which are being forwarded to me, and I appreciate that, and I'm happy to do that, the, the early mornings and the sun up and sunset is a little challenging, I've noticed all over town, now that I'm paying a little more attention to that than I used to, there is a very simple crank that operates that system, I'd like to see if maybe you would consider the, the police department maintaining that equipment right at council, and it can be maintained by, by either the police department or certain employees or staff, so, something to just consider, I ran down Saturday morning early just to, to make sure that it was down, but I had other work to do, and look, look at that.
I do send those notices to the police as well, so I cover all bases.
It, it's a very simple function, uh, just, if you're there on-site, it's pretty easy to pull, so. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Okay, Steve, you have some resolutions for us here?
Yeah, I think the first one's a motion related to a filing with the Iowa Department of Management related to the One University Place Act. I circulated the report, it's a report that's prescribed by Iowa law, uh, there's not a lot of discretion in the wording in the report, in fact, the people at the state kind of helped fill it out, I tried to point out in my email transmitting this, some of that, it's related to particular language, in light of the discussion with council last month concerning, you know, words like obligation or indebtedness, I called the Department of Management, and I said, you know, what are your feelings about changing the wording to this form? They didn't have strong feelings that were favorable to that, and that motion, so, uh, but they explained to me, and they were receptive, they said, you know, this is, you know, look at it as, this is an obligation for purposes of this form, in other words, if the council every year appropriated what the annual appropriation is, that's how we look at it. Nothing about this form does anything in terms of the city's obligation, it's, it's a reporting form and so forth, I did try to point that out in my, in my, uh, email, I'm happy to try to answer any additional questions anyone might have, otherwise, uh, the, the next item is a motion to approve the form and, and direct me to file it.
I'd move that we approve the urban renewal report and have council, city staff file that with appropriate state authorities.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, is there any discussion? Okay, since there's no discussion, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Jerry, are you there?
Aye.
Thank you. Motion carried, okay.
The next item that's on your agenda is one that then, that I then scratched, uh, it related to a particular easement that, um, for One University Place that is already in place and signed, so that one in sixteen sixty-one is a, is a non-starter for the city. The next item then, uh, is resolution sixteen sixty-two, and that, uh, this resolution approves, uh, and accepts a quitclaim deed from the developer of One University Place for a portion of the ravine that lies generally on the east part of that property, it was the subject of considerable discussion over the years, frankly, um, the, uh, the PUD Development Agreement with the developer provides that, at such time as the developer's getting ready to have occupancy of, of the, the project and the building, in this case, the south building, that the developer will convey as much of that ravine as, uh, as is not required, so the part that's not required sort of for setbacks and otherwise for the project or work, um, the developer agreed to convey to the city, so that it may use, maybe used, uh, as a natural area. So the developer provided, or had an auditor's plat made and surveyed to create a legal description, and then city staff looked at that to make sure that that conveyance to the city would not interfere with any of the, um, setback and other requirements of the city's zoning ordinance and PUD development documents and so forth, uh, and our conclusion is that, that, that the deed is appropriate, that, that the property specified, um, is not needed for the project to meet those kind of setbacks and other requirements, and therefore that the city, if, if the city desires, the city should, um, accept the deed, and I say if the city desires, because the city doesn't, you know, doesn't have to take on the property, but, um, but the idea was to, to keep it as green space, uh, and, and that's why it was in the PUD Development Agreement.
I'd move adoption of resolution sixteen sixty-two.
Second.
I have a motion and a second, is there any discussion?
Yes, I have a number of questions, um, let's start off by asking, why are we accepting a quitclaim deed? That's the weakest form of a deed, there's no warranties, that there are any underlying issues with respect to the property?
Yeah, uh, I haven't looked at the abstract yet, I will, they're, they don't have, they haven't provided us with an abstract, accepting the, the deed in this form doesn't, doesn't, uh, I believe the developer have the obligation to convey just as good as I want to do, but I don't see any issue with it.
I do, only because the pod discussions have took issue with that particular, um, transfer of property rights, I understand, if I remember correctly, members of public can probably help me out here, that there was a concern that the city should be assuming clean property, the city should be assuming, um, a, a pretty much completed ravine if there were going to be any changes to whatsoever, and that's the second question I have, what are the outstanding improvements to be completed, because once this transfer is made, we bear the cost of all of those, uh, we bear the cost of all of those responsibilities, and either we have a secondary memorandum of understanding as to who assumes the financial responsibility for those duties, or we should, we should consider finding out exactly what that is, I don't know.
When you talk about what duty you're into on an ongoing maintenance and so forth?
That's right, the ravine's been having a lot of, uh, updates and upkeep, all related to actions that were made by the developer at some point in time throughout this calendar year, so my point is, we need to make sure to, as a council, to know how much of our outstanding financial obligation we're assuming versus receiving the property at zero additional cost to us.
Well, there's the maintenance, as far as I know, there's the maintenance of the grass and those type of things that...
Jeff is here, let's move on.
The long, the long...
Well, our, our intention has always been, and ravine has been a, a real challenge to, to get built, it's been a combination of adaptations, to changing conditions that we learn as we build it, our intention has always been to, to get it strong, get it healthy, get it desirable, regardless of who owns it, I, I fully expect to have to pay to get it to that point, I, I'm not feeling the need to sign on to a twenty-two or thirty-one month timeframe to assure that it's acceptable, I have every intention of keeping it nice, as we was told, and David Schreiber and, and the neighbors across the street are kind of sitting on the edge, watching and observing, are not necessarily judging, but have, have very politely expressed concern about potential headlights, and our intention has always been to make sure that we can keep everybody happy, I don't care whether you convey it now, or do it three years from now, I'm still going to be more vested, more interested in making sure that it's nice, and that our neighbors are happy than probably anyone else will, so.
Thank you very much for stating that, because what you're saying is, you're willing to work with council and coming up with some understanding in writing as to the transfer of the condition of the ravine, and your ongoing investment in, in safekeeping of the ravine improvements that has been started with you, and probably should be monitored until they're, they're mature enough to be turned over.
That's already an agreement with Judy Joyce, she designed it, she's maintaining it, she's responsible.
But that's your agreement between you and Judy Joyce, she is your agent, she's your contractor.
I'll take care of it, and you drive by and look at it, and it'll be just fine.
So would you be agreeable, Jeff, to having something in writing, a memorandum of understanding, pretty simple?
I thought we've already agreed to do that, it's not that I'm not willing to sign it, I thought we had already crossed this bridge.
Steve, do you have a memorandum of understanding in the works then?
I'm not sure you're sorry about the same thing, and even if you are, I don't know what you're talking about there in particular.
What I'm talking about...
The PUD Development Agreement provides that once the, the ravine area is conveyed to the city, that it, that it will thereafter be kept up by the city, so if that's what you mean, we can change that, if that's what that says. In terms of establishing the ravine now, um, before, I, I didn't really complete my thought, and I apologize for not, uh, having the opportunity, but, but this isn't sort of a last go-around, so I recently, like, last night, examined the abstract, the title too, uh, actually, was this property included, because it hasn't been conveyed, and, and there aren't any title issues, okay? Um, the, um, with respect to establishing the property, there are some, some planting items that are, that were underway before, you know, in terms of winter, the thought of staff, and, and, and when I say that, I mean Terry, Gerd, Josiah, Glenn Siders, myself, was, with the north building still sitting out there, and a certificate of occupancy that will have the issue for the north building, um, we can impose the, the final requirements of establishing vegetation on, uh, on, uh, on the north building, and, and that gives the city, you know, some, some authority to make sure that, that what remains at the ravine gets done.
Steve, I really appreciate your alternative thinking here, but it seems to me that it's consistent with the pattern of always delaying, um, a proposed solution that is clean, simple at this time, so, Jeff is not saying that he would not work with us, he's saying, I'll work with you, I just want you to know that I'll work with you with respect to the fact that I've got a long-term interest, and I'm saying, fine, if there's no objection, will you work on a memorandum of understanding to articulate that Jeff is willing to take care of those items that his team has started overlooking through the help of Judy Joyce, so that the city does not have to bear the cost of those expenses, right? So what he started, what he's continuing to do, he'll finish off, I think that's very fair for the city, and that's all I'm asking, I'm not asking about occupancy later, you know, uh, next year, I'm talking about now, December.
And why can't we do it next year, when we do, if you...
Because we forget.
No, I'm not going to forget anything, I made that promise, had every intention of been making it, same promise for a long time, and quite honestly, I like to just be trusted, and just leave it at that.
So, would you mind if we started? So we approve tonight, and going forward with the understanding, we'll prepare, um, an agreement, or whatever you want to call it, for the next go-around, as Jim is suggesting, along with Steve Ballard.
So, I'll, I'll do whatever... Well, may I ask, uh, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Wally?
Go ahead, now go ahead.
Yeah, um, why don't we get an understa- what, what I don't know, I heard what, what, what Sylvia's been saying, but I have, I'd like to know what Jeff's expectations are relative to the quitclaim, and when he wants to say he's done and it's the city's duty, and when he thinks that work is going to be done, I mean, this isn't an, um, an ending ongoing responsibility, I, I don't imagine, but I, I have no idea what, what Jeff's thinking now is, is a timeline that he'd be comfortable with.
I think what, what the ravine right now needs is maturity, it needs time, it needs monitoring, I know in the fall of the year, the vegetation doesn't look real hardy by any means, Judy Joyce is very excited about the plant material that's coming up in the ravine, she pointed out specifically when we were on-site one day, this particular species by more detail than I'll ever care to know, but she knew exactly what was there, and she was quite pleased with the way it's coming, and I said, well, I'm glad that you are, because I'm not real pleased with the way it looks right now, but as it continues to mature, she said it will improve, so, and I told her, as long as you're watching it and keeping an eye on it, and we'll come in and use supplemental seedings, perhaps even more plantings, David Schreiber and, and the neighbors on, on Sunset are actually wanting to keep an eye on and maybe add some additional plant material, which again, we've agreed to do, and that'll all be done with Judy Joyce and council's approval, so it's, it's kind of a process, Jerry, I, I don't know that we can put a necessary timeline on it, but I'd like to think a year or two from now, uh, we're still going to be tweaking that ravine, and I'm going to look at it and determine, when Judy Joyce says it needs to be mowed two or three times a year, the quality care will be asked to go in with the right kind of equipment and, and mow that to maintain the, uh, any volunteer weeds or invasive species that comes into it, so, I just intend to follow their direction and continue to do what we've promised to do, is take as good a care of it as we can, once it matures, at some point in time, uh, if the city chooses to take it over, you can, if you don't, we'll keep it and I'll take care of it, and the association will, if you don't want, we thought that there was some intention of trying to create a, a safe haven by it being a woodland area or a ravine that the city would take control of, and if you choose not to do that, I think that's okay as well, but that's your choice.
Thank you.
A timeframe on it, Jerry, again, I'd have to defer to Judy, but I'm going to say that that ravine will continue to improve in quality probably for the next three to five years, I think that's just fair to say.
You mentioned, um, new plantings, have those been purchased already? You mentioned new plantings. Have those been purchased already?
There are some of them that haven't been planted yet. There's some evergreen trees that are located right in the viewpoint in the center line of the driveway to David Schreiber's front door. He is sending me an email last Saturday night that said that there appears to be a missing tree there. So he's watching it real closely. There actually has, appears to be an electric meter post right in the very center of that. I've assured him that that tree will be planted. It's part of the plan. And that meter is serving the temporary job site trailers that are a McComas Tascina's trailer and that goes on back and back. So I apologize for that. Technically, that's part of phase one. It's officially not seeded, sodded, but that area is certainly going to be part of our finishing product in the spring and summer, '17. I have been in contact with Dave also about this area and, and have looked sometimes during this fall and winter period. It's, it's tough to determine if we want to put in evergreens. They don't really, in my estimation, match the vegetation that's there for the, for the area. So I think, as I concluded, that we have time now, because we're not going to have a whole lot of occupancy during this winter period, and we'll get a better feel as we get into the fall of next year. So, and Jeff and I have talked about it, and, and he's made the same statement, hey, whatever we got to do, whatever we're going to do. So I, I'm very comfortable with that, and I'm continuing to monitor it, and Dave and I have been in contact on this thing, so.
What's the projected cost of acquisition, Jim?
Of what? Bush.
There's money involved here in terms of maintenance costs, so what's the projection of the acquisition?
I have no, I made no projections at this point, Sylvia. I haven't looked at it. I mean, Jeff's going to do it for the, you know, for, for the next couple of years, so I haven't looked at it from that standpoint. I think once it's established, I think once it's established, there'll be, there's no, no fertilization ongoing, like a lawn. There's no weed control like a lawn. The mowing of two or three times, I think, would be the extent of the maintenance. That's what keeps the invasive species down. And as the other hardy, harder, hard tree or plant material takes over, its intention is to, is to strengthen and equal to that terrain. Once it's hardy, I don't think you'll be mowing it. But it'll take, I'll bet you, three to five years, if I were guessing, before that's really mature and healthy and, and able to run on its own. Two to three years, for sure. But we intend to, we, nobody has a, no one has more of a concern than, than we do. Not only that we've promised it, but for the residents of our community in University Heights, as well as the community members in one university place. Okay, is there any further discussion? So.
We have them first in a second.
Yeah, okay.
All right, Kasada? I don't have enough information, so I will abstain. Heverkamp?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Carey?
Yeah, so the next resolution is 1663, and this resolution permits the city treasurer to fund the purchase of the community space, once city staff and the mayor have approved, you know, the closing documents, which means rendering a title opinion, which, which we did last night. And there's good title, looking at a closing statement with, you know, usual stuff, the numbers. The, the price in the purchase agreement that's already been adopted by the council and approved is $275,000. There typically are some adjustments to that price, corations to closing. In this case, I don't know that there'll be any, because I don't know that there's a tax amount. But in any event, the council's already agreed to the purchase, and this, this resolution simply permits the treasurer to cut the check once city staff and the mayor have, have approved the closing documents and closing figures.
Does that also include certificate of occupancy then, Steve?
Yeah, so that's a good question. So none, none of the properties, none of the units at OUP will be conveyed without a certificate of occupancy, at least I wouldn't expect that. But certainly, as the city's attorney, I won't advise the city to close on a, on a, on a unit without all the certificate of occupancy items having been completed and the actual certificate issued. And obviously, we're going to talk more about that tonight. But yes, it includes that, that condition.
I move adoption of resolution 1663.
Okay, second. Is that Dottie, or second?
Either one's going to be left here. So we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion?
We've got a question, if I could ask it.
Yes, go ahead.
On the offer to purchase in 23A purchase price, it says the, the price has been markedly reduced, it's $155,000 under fair market value. What, does that have any negative implications for the city, and why is that in the document?
I don't think it has any negative implications to the city. I think it was sort of a recitation of, of the circumstances. I don't know if it gave any particular benefit to the developer, but I think, I think it was included because at the time, we were, you know, there was a negotiation, as you'll recall, about various items. And, and I, I think that was an acknowledgement of why the purchase price was, you know, why the purchase price was established where it was. I, I don't remember this, but it might have been important for the developer to be able to say to somebody else, well, I sold it to the city for that price because I made a deal with them on some other things. I don't know.
Okay, okay. That's fine, as long as it doesn't, as long as it doesn't adversely impact the city, that's fine.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Heverkamp?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Lane?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Kasada?
Aye.
Carey?
The next resolution is 1664, and I, I apologize, I emailed that right before I left for the meeting. We've been working on this pretty much nonstop since Friday, and we were waiting for the final things to get resolved. All of this relates to the certificate of occupancy. I also emailed you my updated color-coded punch list of certificate of occupancy items. There are only just a few that are left. I don't want to confuse the issue. The 1664 is not, is not the council's direction or authority to issue a certificate of occupancy. Terry Gert will do that when everything has been met. The, the list of items in the, in the punch list are the ones that are yet to be completed. And as I said, there, there are just a few left. What 1664 does is it, is the council's approval of some of the items that are included on the punch list, that are spelled out in the development agreement or in resolutions or ordinances of the council that, just so there's no confusion about what was required and whether that was met and so forth. As I've said a couple of times, city staff, Josiah, Terry, Glenn Siders, and I have, have worked hard with, with Jeff, and, well, mostly Jeff and his team. I've mostly worked with Mr. Goman, but nonetheless, I know that Ron Amalon from MMS and others have been involved. And so what 1664 says is that most of the things that are in the, the punch list have been completed. There are a few that remain. They'll be completed before the certificate of occupancy issues. And that, that one particular document, an easement for stormwater, is, is accepted by the city and is authorized to be signed by the mayor. I, I'm happy to go through every one of these if you want me to. There's, there's several of them. It might be beneficial. So I'll, I'll take some direction from you, and then there, there is one additional thing I want to say about them.
I don't know, I think you speak with Howard, or someone.
What are your top three, Steve? Oh, no, I don't really, I don't have a top three. So, so this, this spreadsheet was, was submitted a couple of months ago. It's been worked on ever since. Things have been added, some things have been taken away. And there were some things that were included in the, in the PUD development agreement, like maintaining a retaining wall, if, if a retaining wall was built and, and it extended on the city property. Well, that turned out not to apply because that retaining wall wasn't built and extending on the city property. There were various easements that had to be in place, both utilities and the easements with the University of Iowa, the property owner to the north for drainage. There were onsite drainage and water, stormwater easements, some of which were approved by the city council back in 2015, and others that have been, or one that's, that's up for approval tonight, which is onsite stormwater. I don't know that I have any top three. It's just been, been a lot of moving parts. There are a couple of items that remain, and I guess I said that. There's a, a certificate of insurance that I'm, I'm sure is just a matter of the insurance person getting a copy of something to us, which, which I think will happen tomorrow. There, there's a, an issue, well, there's a couple of easements that haven't been signed yet. I'm sure that if I walked back to Mr. Maxwell, he'd probably sign them right now. But we'll get those signed before certificate of occupancy issues and recorded. There are, you know, there's, there's, yeah, we're, we're missing some landscaping sheets that I know exist. We just don't have them in hand, so we need to acquire those. And then there, there's an issue related to some as-built, you know, as-built plans. So I'm assuming you all know what that means. So, okay, yeah.
As-built.
So an as-built, so you, you know, you, and again, it's hard for me to talk about this in front of people like Mr. Bill Skemper and Mr. Maxwell, but from my standpoint, you know, you, you design a sewer, or whatever it might be, and you, you draw plans, and then somebody goes and builds it, and then you come back out and you, you measure it and you, you know, you shoot lines and stuff, and you create another set of plans saying, this is how we actually built it, this is how it exists in fact on, you know, on the earth. That's what an as-built is. And so some of the, like, there's, there's an as-built that can't be completed because of weather. And, so that's an item. There's some bios cells that need some attention that Josiah has worked hard with, with the OUP members on to figure out what to do, because there's a little work that needs to be done to those. The benefit, and this is why I mentioned the north building earlier, the benefit of having this north building is that, you know, the council can approve things as they are now, but it's not a final approval, because they're still going to need a certificate of occupancy for the north building. Things like easements to make sure that unit owners in the south building have power and that the water is going to drain, and those kinds of things, yeah, all those things are met and satisfied here. But there are a few touch-up things, almost all of which will be completed before a certificate of occupancy would issue for the south building, a couple of which will, you know, have to wait for warmer weather. But city staff is comfortable with approval in the present condition, knowing that there's a commitment to sit, to satisfy these things, and the city's remedy to enforce that commitment is that there will be another go-around with the certificate of occupancy once the north building is in a position that it needs that approval.
I'd like to ask Josiah, as an engineer, to provide an opinion as to the top three items that should rise above all the other ones that have been mentioned at this time, or reported on that punch list. What do we need to be aware of as, as of this, at this time, Josiah? That is a risk for the city that we need to pay attention to.
But Cindy? My top three is, I think, the only three left that I'm involved with. As Steve was just mentioning, the, the bios cell has some requirements on it. It was found that the way it was built wasn't quite right, and I know that, so I've worked with Ron Amalon at MMS. He's identified what he needs to do to fix it.
By how much of a devi- deviation was that? Or how bad, or?
I'll just tell you, I mean, I don't know how to answer that, but the, the bios cell has, it was designed to handle stormwater for a certain rain event, and it sized with the volume. The grading and where the intakes were placed were a little bit off and where the bottom of it was. So they actually need to do some regrading to sort of build up the volume to get it back to how it was designed. And that's what he was mentioning, that's sort of, in my opinion, I guess Jeff couldn't say otherwise. I think that's probably next construction season, before you get out there and mess around with it.
Sure, that's, I don't know.
So the other things I was involved with, like the, the landscape plans and the management plan, and who's responsible for maintenance on the bios cells, I don't see those as big issues. I think they will just prepare and provide those. That's more just so that we have assurance that there is a plan, and everybody can go back and see what the drawings were.
Steve, I don't see where in the resolution 1664 there's a, there's contingency language that outstanding items as of tonight, such as the very important bios cell, will be fixed despite the fact the council may vote and approve on this tonight.
Yeah.
I'd like to see language like that built into the resolution. Do any of the other councils have any problem with that?
So I, if, if the staff's aware of this, and I think they're going to make sure it happens, and as Steve pointed out, which is what I talked to him about earlier, was that the north building, we still have to do certificate occupancy for that, and I'd want to be sure that all of those things are completed at that time.
So I know I didn't give you an opportunity to read this before tonight, and I apologize for that. It's, you know, I, we were finishing things until, until I left the meeting. Paragraph 12 of the resolution says that certain modifications to bios cells at the OUP development will not be completed until the 2017 construction season. But upon received information satisfactory to the city engineer that the required modifications will be made, the city council accepts the condition as satisfying ordinance number 169, with the understanding that the confirmation of final compliance will be made as a condition of the north condominium building.
It's a final line that's built into the resolution. Okay, good. All right.
If, if I could just clarify that real simply, the, the four overflow intake structures that Josiah and Ron Amalon have recommended be raised and elevated. Josiah, those four structures were installed today, so those extensions are up to seven and nine inches as they were supposed to be. The only remaining thing is the north curb line of the bioswale. In simplistic terms, if I nailed two two-by-fours on top of the curb and regraded the dirt to elevate it, that would raise the dam level large enough to equate to the storage calculations that Ron and Josiah have calculated that are required. But right now, what it'll do is, in that heavy event, the water would go over the curb line and run on down to the north. So if the sod were pulled back, the reason that we didn't build them the way they were designed is the sod is already so steep that we can't hold it on the slope. So from a long-term maintenance, we met in the middle, so we're going to hike that north curb line about three inches. That additional volume will give the support to the storage volume that's required, and that's really all that amounts to. Is that fair to say, Josiah?
Yeah.
So those are the specifications that you have, that you have professionally applied is, is being needed here.
Yeah.
Ron Amalon actually calculates the volume based on the surveyed elevations. And if the water can leak by going over a low spot, who won't retain enough water? Then we're not in accordance to the design standards, and that's what Josiah and Ron have identified. This is a remedy. Somehow or another, we need to figure out how we can raise that north curb line. And I'm not real clear whether it's the entire length of the curb or just a portion of it. And again, we'll fine-tune that when we can peel the sod back and make sure we've got it. It's a, it's a real simple adjustment to make, and we'll be happy to do that. So that, that's the bioswale issue.
Josiah, I'm going to ask if your engineering report could have a placeholder for that one topic, so that we don't forget about it. And, let's see. In addition to the certificate of occupancy, I guess we can treat it. I just wanted to bring up the issue with a bus port. We have an outstanding issue with receiving, I don't know, necessary arrangements so that we can have a bus port created in front of a university place for transportation needs. But I'm happy to handle that once the occupancy permit for the north side building becomes an issue.
I do have a, a list going for the north building, just, and I'll keep adding to it as we go along.
Thanks. Okay, thanks.
So, the end of this, or the conclusion of the resolution, again, says that this isn't an approval of a certificate of occupancy, but rather, the city staff will, will ensure compliance with the punch list items that aren't listed in this resolution as having been approved or qualifiably been approved. And so, I do want to point that out. There are a few items that remain, and... The last thing I guess I would point out, I think I said this in my email, went to report Monday, but, but there isn't a, there, I think there's an urgency from everybody's standpoint to try to get everything done so that your certificate of occupancy can issue this month. I don't know that there's an urgency that it happened tonight. If the council wants more time to evaluate some of these considerations and is willing to hold a special meeting, you know, I don't, I don't see a problem with that. I know the city as a buyer wants to get into its unit. I imagine there's others people that want to get into theirs, but I did want to remind everyone of that possibility.
Thanks. I appreciate that. I, the only, and I'm, I just want to go on record saying I only joked about your top three, Steve, because looking at it, other than turning in a paper or signing something, I only saw three things left on the list that were issues that needed to be dealt with, so I don't want to be able to take anything wrong from that, so...
Is there any further discussion?
We need a first amendment.
Yeah?
I don't have a first amendment.
I move adoption of resolution 1664.
Second. Any further discussion? Jerry?
I'm fine.
Yep.
Okay, Jerry, I'm starting with you. Zimmerman?
I'm staying.
Lane?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Kasada?
Aye.
Aberkamp?
Aye.
I said staying.
I got that. Thank you.
Oh, I thought you said Kerry, not Jerry. Thank you.
The next item then is consideration of resolution 66, excuse me, 1665, which authorizes the mayor and the clerk to sign a lease termination agreement with, with Paul and Janet Moore for the city office. The specified date is the end of the month, and from what I think Wally has been close contact with Paul, and I think that Paul's said he'll work with the city, but, but there is a lease, and it is in writing, and it does extend for three and a half, four years, so...
They're out of the termination.
All he said was, we have problems, that if it goes over a few days, he doesn't have a problem with that, so he's been very cooperative.
Steve, could I just ask a procedural question?
Sure.
Is, is this something, is this something that the council has to vote on, or could Wally do that on his own?
No, the council ought to vote on it. It's presently, Jerry, it's an, it's, you know, it's a legal obligation of the city that extends through the middle of 2019, and so the council ought to vote if it's going to amend its legal obligation that way.
Okay, and while he just can't do that, that's not in power, you're saying?
I, I, if I were Wally, I wouldn't be comfortable doing it, and advising Wally, I wouldn't advise him to do it, so I guess that's a no.
Okay, okay. I'm just, I'm just wondering how to scale back on the details that the council has to consider and what can be done as illustrated with, so that was the only intent of the question.
And I think it's a fair one. I think when it comes to signing lease documents or terminating lease documents, I think the council needs to, needs to vote on that. When the auditor, this is a, this is a poor answer, but it's also the last one I gave you. When the auditor comes around, they're going to expect that, that there was a council action to authorize the mayor to take this sort of action.
Right. In particular, I just want to draw attention. This, this week or last week in the newspaper, we had an instance in Iowa where we had a row clerk taking all sorts of actions without council's consent, so I think it's important to make sure that we have all of our eyes and teeth crossed.
Well...
We brush our eyes regularly here.
Yeah, yeah.
I've been waiting all night to use that.
I approve adoption of 1665.
Okay, we have a, we have a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Motion is second. Any further discussion?
Lane?
Aye.
Maher?
Aye.
Kasada?
Aye.
Aberkamp?
Aye.
Zimmerman?
Aye.
Kerry?
Sylvia, 1666.
All right, before consideration at tonight's council, I have a resolution 1666 to adopt university-type spaces, city hall policies, and procedures. At last council meeting, I offered to do the research, to get something going in writing, and so I have brought it back in the form of attachment aid for the public and city council to consider. Because of that, I want to be very clear right now that I am going to request a deferral of action until January's council meeting so that we have an appropriate input from the public, who is a huge stakeholder for this facility rental process of procedures that we're working on. So, I do want to walk you through the document. The first page of this document is the rental facility application. I ask that you provide feedback and comments on this, but it's a pretty much standard document that I found throughout various communities who have, who have somewhat well-established policies and procedures only because they happen to have several facilities that they run. The second piece is the rental agreement with the actual terms and conditions, including the hours of rental, which are key, and I would really like to hear back from the public as to the hours. A little bit about the methodology of, of what these hours were. After discussing with a couple of different parks and recreation folks as to what would, they would recommend in their experience, given that we don't have full-time staff to administer the facilities, they recommended lengthier periods of rentals so that we could accommodate longer durations and fewer touchpoints with city staff. So, that's reflective of that. The other thing too that I learned in the course of, of doing this research is that many of these counterparts around our, around our city are very excited to hear that there's another rental facility coming on board because many of them have long waiting lists and they refer people to other facilities. So, if you can please help us, council, look at the use terms. That would be wonderful. There is also a final cleanup checklist. This is a common feature that is strongly suggested that I include in the document, principally because many of these department staffs have encountered problems where they have not been specific in their agreement, and as a result, you know, certain situations happen where it would have been helpful to have had something in writing. The last piece is also the rules for the use of alcohol. That is something that was discussed in the November or October council meeting as an element that the city council should consider, and so I wrote it down based on what, what is, what are some very common and general rules for the use of alcohol, most, mainly because a lot of it is regulated by the, by the Iowa code. So, the language here reflects what is benchmarking across different municipalities. And the municipalities that I looked into were comparable sites that have kitchenettes, have comparable equipment such as ours, and can accommodate, they'll say, personal receptions to business receptions as well. So, those were the Northridge Pavilion in Coralville, the Hyawatha Community Center in Hyawatha, Iowa, the Terry True Blood Reception Facility in Iowa City, and a couple of questions, but nothing significant or outstanding. So, those were the comparables that I looked at, and I'm requesting for public feedback to ensure that this policy reflects the community's wishes and council's best input.
I, I just have a, a quick question, and I think we have to be careful in comparing Terry True Blood or the others you mentioned. I think it's a, it's a different animal, but that's either here or there at this point. But what, what I did notice is the language, the community center is not available for sectarian or religious worship. Why not?
That is actually found in one of our model municipalities.
I, 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 I don't care what I'm doing. I'm asking why. What is the rationale? Not that somebody else has done it, but why?
Separation of church and state. That's one that we, I'd love, let's talk about it. Let's have a discussion. Let's figure out where we, where we come out as a council and as residents on this issue.
Yeah, I, I think as long as we allow different religious groups without discrimination to rent it or even lending it to them, I mean, look at our own history at St. Andrews. I think it's a...
St. Andrews is a nonprofit, private entity, private enterprise.
Not, but, as I said, I don't, I, I'd like that to be a topic of discussion later, and...
It will be.
And also, yeah.
I think the hardest part, Jerry, you have to remember, is putting something down in writing. That's the, that's where, that's where the hard work and big-time lifting is done. Critiquing and whatever else discussing, that's the easier part, so I'm sure we can come up with some good resolution and compromise.
Well, thanks for doing the hard part, Sylvia. I appreciate it.
Sylvia, I appreciate what you've done here. You know, Oxford or Sherryville, one of the two has their own community center. Might be more comparable to our size and just, yeah, so I think taking a look at those, and I'd be happy to call and get those, it's on some of that, that would be helpful, too. I think the prices are a little high. Just input on this. I've looked at it a great deal. I think we want to try to encourage people early on to use it, and maybe we start lower and raise it later. It bothers me that nonprofits get one price and residents pay three times more, so that's a little bit, you know...
I'm reserving it as my nonprofit every time. I've already filed a 500.
Yeah, but all of those are just items, I think, just items we needed to talk about, and that's, and I'm not hearing any, you know, and I think that's what we, that's what we do with this particular one.
That's right. I think that, I think those are really good comments, but you just have to be aware that when alcohol is involved, everybody's deposits all increase, and also they're permitting increases. And then you also have to understand that there is a ambiance charge that is, is benchmarking across comparables, so I'm comparing a single-family home to a single-family home and not a duplex and not anything else other than that, so...
So, that's why I think, that's why I think Kevin might be a better comparison as a single facility and some things like that.
You also, I think our best one is Northridge Pavilion. Northridge Pavilion is, it's a good, well, a standalone in a metropolitan area, but by, you know, being proximate and by university, the hospital, stadium.
I'll disagree some as somebody who's actually booked that for school district events. I mean, size-wise, significantly different.
I would just, I would disagree with that too, Sylvia. I think it's an entirely different animal, Northridge Pavilion.
Well, you guys can come up with your own reasons.
But I think we should talk about this next time. Should we table this and fill up?
We will. That's what I asked first overall.
And I think, I sent you some questions already, Sylvia, that start me right off the bat, but I, I'll, I will have more too, I think, but I think the other thing to think about is that, I know at one point Wally had suggested a special meeting for this, but I'm also thinking that I would, I'd be okay, maybe as thinking about this tonight, not having a special meeting, but talking about it again in January, just because we don't need to be ready to accept reservations as soon as we open, and I would, I would think that giving ourselves some lead time to be in the building before we start doing anything and think about working toward accepting reservations this summer might, might be the way to go on that.
Well, what I, I was thinking of a work session because like, like I said, I thought this was a very good start, but...
Right.
You know, we, there's, we need to figure out who's going to unlock the door for one and who's going to lock it up when it's over, who's going to check it over. We need to get signs up in the, you know, in the community center itself, you know, hours and who do you contact and this sort of a thing. So, there's a lot of, there's a lot of little detailed issues, and that's kind of why I thought that a work session would be better, and we could invite the public to the work session, obviously, and have people just throw some ideas around. If we could sit around for an hour or two, I think we could, I think we could come up with some, but, I, no, Sylvia, this is, this is, this is, this is very good. I think this is very good, but I think, you know, it's, it's a great, it's a great start, but there's just, I, I've been looking at all this stuff, and there are just so many little details that, you know, that I keep it powdering all the time, and I just think it'd be nice to, you know, have us all sit down and talk about some of these things, so...
And that's, I think this is a great opportunity, the door opener, to invite the public to come in. They're, they're the stakeholders of this community center. They're the reason it's here. And so, also, not that any of you overlooked it, there's also a mission statement. I borrowed that mission statement from another city, thinking we should probably really think about what the mission statement is so it can guide the values of the, of how the city community center will be used. So, I really do request that our public take to heart the invitation to provide comments, and if you want anonymity, feel free to say, please don't disclose my name, and we'll do our best not to, you know, spill the beans. All right?
Okay. You want to go to your next item?
That's right. The next item is approval of University Heights 2017 TIF rebate in a special meeting. My comments were, you know, I don't think the public, I, I was caught off-guard by this one too, and that is that on November the 29th, the city council met on a special meeting to discuss the first award of the TIF rebate under the TIF agreement for the One University Place. And as I looked at the documents which arrived, somebody collected, I don't remember if they were on, but they arrived, you know, on a tight deadline, I think. It was Thursday when I received an email saying, show up, you're needed for a special meeting. The following Tuesday or Monday, we were in a special meeting, and documents were being issued, I think, Sunday night going into the day of the meeting, and these are pretty, you know, this is a very racist with me, and I said, look, you, why are we awarding the TIF after Thanksgiving? This is a huge, significant decision that needs to be front and center at a regularly-scheduled meeting. And more importantly, after documents were sent to us for review in preparation of this meeting, I looked at the dates of preparation of these documents. The, the TIF worksheet that Jeff Maxwell had to complete and sign was, was dated October 14th, which means that on November 8th, when city council met for its regularly-scheduled meeting, where was this item? It should have been handled at that meeting. It should have been taken care of. It should have been managed. So, I don't know what happened on that financial report. Somebody dropped the ball. Fine, happens all the time around here, but this is one of the most important financial transactions that the city is embarking on for the next 15 years, and it's inappropriate to be awarding taxpayer subsidies on a special meeting. It should have been done at a regularly-scheduled meeting, in particular because the documents that were submitted to city council had been prepared at minimum six weeks ago. So, that's all I have to say, and that is that I hope that this, you're, as councillors here going forward, significant financial information that involves taxpayer policy decisions, they belong initially, at minimum for disclosure and transparency purposes, discussed at a, at a regularly-scheduled meeting, and if there's any additional work that needs to be managed or discussed in a special meeting, it will be appropriate. And that's it. Thank you for letting me express my opinion on that.
Okay, thank you. So, the next item on the agenda is the mayor's report.
Excuse me. Steve, are you done with your legal report?
Did you have a response to that, or no?
I mean, no, we, I don't, we got to my legal report yet, but...
No, we haven't. We haven't gotten there.
Oh, we haven't gotten there. Okay, okay.
We have it?
I didn't see it on the agenda. I didn't see it on the agenda. Okay, thank you.
We have a three-page, we have a three-page agenda.
Okay, so I've got a list of things to talk about, but there's also some things that are specifically on the agenda. Um, the first thing I would like the council to do is approve $2,000 for miscellaneous expenses, which I can take care of as they, as they occur, uh, that involve, uh, the city hall police department, moving the city hall and police department to OUP. Part of the letter that Paul Moore wrote, he would like the carpet cleaned. There's a lot of wall repair that needs to be done after we take our shelves down and he prefers to have his own people come and do that. Uh, the carpet, I've got, I've got a bid of like a hundred bucks, but that includes a sales tax, a little less than that. Paul really thought that $500 would take care of all the, the things that have to be done and that includes taking the, uh, the decal sign down off of the window and he prefers that a professional do that instead of one of us getting out there with a razor blade scraper, that's expensive glass. And there's just going to be other things. Mike and I talked about, um, whether we were going to actually get volunteers to come and help us move, you know, get a few folks with pickups or, or whatever to come down or whether we're going to hire it done. I think the, you know, the weather might be an issue on that a little bit. I kind of agreed with Mike on that. So, um, so basically that's, uh, that's what I would like the council, I'd like a motion just, just for, I, $2,000 should more than cover it and I talked that over with Mike. That's how we came up with that, uh, with that figure.
Go move.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Okay. Any further discussion?
I just wanted to say, I, I mean, talking with Wally, I do think, even though we don't have a, a large amount of equipment in the city office, I, I do think looking into a smaller group to hire to move actually is, is money well spent. Uh, the, the, oh, shoot. What just, I was looking at Mix Warehouse and the Dream Foundation with Bill Spector. They don't do moving anymore.
They don't do it anymore.
No, I think they, I, they all got old, I think, as, as they got out of their moving business, but there are enough other local small firms that can, I, I think it's, I think it's well worth it to have somebody moving our stuff, so. And I, I'll continue to look at prices. I've, I've got a few things together and try to put together a best.
Okay. Any further discussion?
So I, I just want to be clear here, you'll, we were, we're agreeing for you to approve up to $2,000.
Yeah, yeah.
But there'll still be bills.
There probably will be other things, yeah, but I, you know, I just want to be able to do like $2,000.
No, and I'm fine with that idea.
Yeah, so, yeah. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Right.
Opposed?
Jerry was there?
All right.
Mr. Mayor?
Um, Jerry Wood, yeah. The other thing is consideration of a rental contract for garage with Paul Moore at $50 per month. He is anticipating at some point in the future, not necessarily the near future, but he's going to tear down that garage because they need more space for, for Stella's. And so what he wants to do is just do it on a month-to-month basis with, uh, with a 90-day notice from either one of us to terminate the, to terminate the agreement. And I think $50 a month is, is really pretty decent, so. Um, with their signs out there, there's, I mean, there's all kinds of stuff out there that we, and we've gotten rid of some of it. Russ has, Russ has done a pretty good job of cleaning it out, so there is some space down there that we can, we can move, move things in. I also talked about putting a, a little better lock on that door in case we end up moving things from the, from the city hall out there on, on a temporary basis, so. So do I have a motion to, uh, to sign a rental agreement with Paul Moore?
Move to approve their garage rental agreement.
Second.
Here we have a motion in a second. Any further discussion?
I just want to say at $50 a month, we did, we cleaned it out, keep it and sublet it at a bigger amount.
Use it for 10% or 10%. Okay.
That's your, that's your covered space for $50 a month. Man.
I'm sorry, who was the second? I was.
Okay, so Paul in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay. Um, the other request that Paul made was that he wants us to change the street sign that's out in front of the, of the city hall. Um, I'm skipping over the council discussion for work session because we already, we already talked about that, okay? So consideration to change the street sign to two-hour parking outside the city hall as opposed to the sign that says University Heights, uh, staff only. And we do have a sign out in the garage that says that, so Russ can switch that over real fast when the time comes, so. Um, and we know that with the community vision thing, that may go away in a few years, but for the time being, I think it's okay. So do I have a motion to, to change the sign?
Move, do change the signs.
You have a second?
Second.
Okay. Motion in a second. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Okay. Um, this kind of goes to Josiah. We've been, we need to place two signs at the east exit of OUP. Um, one to say, uh, no left turn and one, actually, this is not correct, I have one-way on there. It should be yield, a yield sign and a no-left turn sign. So we talked about eventually adding a one-way sign out there if we need it, but deduct, did everybody see the, the diagrams that Josiah sent around? We can put both these signs on one post.
Do we want that many signs?
I just think we need to make sure people are, people definitely understand that they, well, first of all, the yield has to be there because otherwise you're, at, at a, most intersection, the person on the right has the right of way. So if you put the yield sign down there, then the folks pulling out of OUP have to yield to traffic coming down that street and then the, and then the, uh, the no-left turn sign.
I, I thought Jeff said tonight that they started to put signs in the median already. That surprised me when he said that tonight. Did you hear that, Josiah?
Yeah, that, that was signs they still had to put up. That was for the median.
Oh.
Uh, there were some required signs that says, there was a median.
Median coming, oh, okay, all right. I was thinking, boy, that was really...
Just on the nose.
Okay, got it, okay.
My goal is just to make sure it gets done.
So that was the main thing, so. To me, it seems like if we started with the yield and the one-way and that would, and I like, yeah, or whatever it was that Josiah had on the single, on the single post, start with that. If it turns into a problem, then, then maybe go with another sign, but I'd like to, yeah, yeah. Just the single post, do those two first, yeah.
Okay, all right, so let's take that as a motion. I have a second.
Which two? The no-left turn and yield?
Yeah, that'd be it, the no-left turn and yield.
Okay, thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, so we have a motion in seconds. Is there any more discussion?
Well, I just want to, and really kind of supported Jerry, if this turned into a problem, we may, we need to recognize we may do something else because we...
We'll put those tire shredder things in if you drive down backwards.
Okay. Further discussion? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Okay. Okay, so I'm just going to go over what I have in my, my mayor's report here. Um, I spoke with Kevin Munson a couple of times here in the last couple of weeks and they are anticipating that we're going to be closing sometime shortly after December 15th. Now, that's the actual closing of the building and we still have all this occupancy issues that have to be resolved, but Steve's been working on that. Um, my hope is that we can do some of this, we, if we get everything done, do it between, on the week between Christmas and New Year's. Christmas is on a Sunday, so that kind of helps us. And I'll be around to help and I don't know, depending, I don't know how many people are going to be around for the holiday, going for the holidays. Um, the other thing I have is that, I had talked to Kevin about this pedestal, you know, the, the two pedestals that are on the, uh, on the, uh, on each end of OUP. We get, we get one slap, we get basically the second slap. And I went over and looked at that and it says one, One University Place. Well, if we have City of University Heights, it's, it's longer, but I talked to Kevin today and he said we could still do that with smaller letters. And that would be my recommendation.
Any renditions of that, of that, that box item that you're talking about?
If you want to get it from him, I feel free to, to do so. No, I just, I just thought when he said four to $5,000, I just thought, well, you know, if we get, if we get decals on the windows, I, like we have now, I think it'll be, I think it'll be fine. By the way, I do have a meeting with, I called Paul Moore and he said that Hollywood Graphics did what we have now and they're going to take that off. And so I'm going to meet with them on Friday and just see if anybody wants to join me for the meeting. I don't know when it's going to be because he wasn't sure and I wasn't sure. Um, and he'll give the, he'll give us his thoughts and give us, give us some sort of an estimate. But anyway, so going back, can I get a, do I need a, do I need council approval to do the, to, to, for the pedestal signs for City of University Heights?
Wally, I would, I would just suggest that, uh, we get some sort of rendering of them to see what the visibility is of the sign from any distance.
Are you talking about the pedestal sign now?
Yeah.
Yes.
He, he's, he's going to do that, but, but I just need to tell him what we want so he can do that, so.
Yeah, that's fine.
So, yeah, yeah, okay. So I'll just, this is, this is just a rendering and we'll look at it first before we decide. I don't think we need a, we need a resolution or a motion, and so, okay. Um, Chris has done a fair amount of work of cleaning out the city offices and Russ has been working on the garage that we're, you know, we're moving along little by little. Um, since there's so many residents here, um, you can spread the word. We're thinking if some residents has some kind of artwork that they don't want, that they don't want it around the house anymore, that's, that's halfway decent, that we, you know, we, we, they could donate it to the city and, you know, to put up in the, on the walls, because there's a significant amount of wall space. I was out at, we do have, we did find those two things that you were, that you were, you were wondering about, I think, so that have like...
The history posters?
Yeah, the history posters, they're, they're, they're nice, but I went out to Tiffin. They've got some nice stuff out there too, so. Um, checks were issued this week for their, not this week, last week, last Tuesday, checks were issued for the interior furnishings. Um, Alice Haugen has agreed to, to continue her term on the zoning commission, which expires on the 31st. Ann Duddler has chosen not to, uh, not to continue. And so I've offered the position to Doris Ikai, who has lived in University Heights for 20 years. She lives at 33 Highland Drive. She is a retired chemistry professor. Um, she was at before here, she was a Penn State Erie. And I had met her campaigning last fall and she just seemed like somebody that would be a good, a good person to get involved in some city, uh, city issues. One thing she said that she impressed me with, she's got a couple of rental houses and she says, she said, you know, I keep up my rental houses and she said, I wish everybody did as well as I did. And I thought, she, she's going to be good for something. So anyways, so can I get the, the council to approve the appointment of Doris Ikai to the Ikai?
I'm motion.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Um, is Ann the current chairperson and who will become?
Well, I think they have to decide.
They decide that.
I don't know, I, my guess is that Randall Heson might be the, might be the logical person. I'm not sure how long he's been on, but just talking to him, I think he might be, he might be a good possibility, so.
That's fine.
I haven't talked to him about that, but, uh, anyway, so we'll get to, we have a motion in a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, so we got a bunch of old street signs in the garage. Mike thought we ought to try to sell them for $10 apiece. What does everybody think of that?
You have a bunch of what?
Old street signs. I mean, I don't know what...
I think there's a law that prohibits the selling of street signs and I, that's, I think, believe that's a regulated activity and I think the League of Cities could help us find an answer to that.
All right, I recall the League of Cities.
Our recycling partners out in Cornwall, they actually do prohibit anybody who comes on the premises when you take scrap metal and, and remove any of the transportation signs are considered regulated items, I think.
So what do you do with them right now?
They, they get to recycle them for scrap metal.
Well, they do, I thought you said they prohibited the recycling, okay.
You can't resell, like I can't buy, you know, one from my son's bedroom or anything like that, but you certainly could recycle it with them if you wanted.
Okay, just recycle it as metal then, so.
Right.
We can do better selling if we can sell them, though. Our olive court signs for this right football collector would...
Yeah, well, I'll find out. We can do it because there might be some people...
I'm, I'm actually serious for once, something like that, that would be something, yeah, yeah.
Action of the community sign, exactly.
There you go.
And the last item on my list is, uh, when I was talking to, uh, when I was talking to Clayton last week about the draperies, um, the draperies that we purchased do not include anything for the east corners, the northeast or the southeast corner, because if you look at that, there's a post there and they're very small and so we thought we would just defer that for the time being and, uh, and then if we decide we want some there later, you know, we, we can do that, so. Okay, and that's, that's kind of the, I have everything on my list.
And Wally, Wally, are you going to talk about the, uh, the police parking signs at OUP?
That's, that's coming up under your part of the agenda.
Okay, we're good.
Okay. Um, okay. Um, zoning commission report, Pat Bauer.
The zoning commission met at city hall a week, uh, ago with city attorney Ballard. We've been engaged in about a half dozen work sessions over the course of late summer and fall. And, uh, we shared with, uh, Steve the thoughts we have about the initiatives we'd like him to, uh, pull together and draft ordinance for. Uh, you can see the memo and supporting information, uh, is attached to the agenda of last week's meeting, uh, but it includes, uh, building coverage and demolition permits and maybe, uh, lot consolidation, a subdivision ordinance, uh, and also, um, an expansion of the stormwater management. Right? We're not really there yet on, uh, sensitive areas, but, uh, he's going to be getting back to us with draft ordinances, uh, at our January meeting that we will then, kind of, after we've taken a look at them and made any changes that we think appropriate, we'll perhaps present to council, um, and not necessarily for initial formal action or for some indication as how the council would let us to proceed with the full public hearings on it, or if you think there's sufficiently, um, consensus type of issues, maybe just bring them on for council adoption. Uh, at that meeting, I also reported to the zoning commission that, uh, the mayor and I had met, uh, about two weeks ago tomorrow, I guess, with a gentleman, uh, who has, uh, an idea for development of the flom property. Um, and you probably saw attached to the submission I, uh, sent into council about the public records request policy. Um, I, uh, shared with, um, that person the procedures that have been followed previously with Grandview and Burke Dale and OUP as well as the GG Land Corporation initiative a few years back. Um, Wally indicated, the mayor indicated that the December meeting was pretty jam-packed, but suggested that, uh, the individual get on the agenda for the January meeting and share with his, with council his idea. Uh, I referenced what happened with GG Land Corporation. After that initial presentation to council, the council suggested that there be a Good Neighbor meeting, which was held, uh, and that was then followed by, I think, the following meeting, the council indicating that their read was, at least two members of the council indicated that that proposal wasn't something that, that they approved. So this, these people are interested in trying to come up with something that would be attractive to the community and I've suggested the, kind of, the template from a prior couple of times around the block on this, that that's not a bad pattern to follow, so. Um, it wasn't a public meeting, but I did, uh, it will be my policy going forward in all such meetings to record them. And I believe that that's in public record, that's for $30. Uh, the clerk can make a copy of it for you at some point.
So, any questions about what's happening with...
As a Dylan fan, you're not going to be selling bootlegs for finishing your ride back. Thank you for doing that and thank you, and thank you for taking the time to go through that with the folks that were looking for information. That, that's, I think that's incredibly helpful, so.
What are we doing with Pat's letter, which I appreciate? I just got before the meeting and I hadn't had a chance to read. I don't have any problem with you giving out information like you did, so I, that part I saw. Steve, did you, have you looked at it and can we incorporate that into it?
I know it's, I know it's, I haven't, I'm sorry, I don't have, I just haven't had
I know it's, I know it's, I haven't, I'm sorry, I don't have, I just haven't had a chance to-
Okay, that's fine.
That suggests-
Pat sent in- Pardon?
That's what happened with my other letters a couple of years ago, huh?
That's right.
No, he's suggesting, suggestions for the public information policies. He sent that last week?
Sunday.
Sunday, yeah.
I'd recommend we defer the letter along with any other public comments on chapter 22 for the January meeting. So that the public-
We don't have it as an action item tonight, anyway.
No, I didn't, no, I wasn't trying to-
More importantly, I think the public needs to read these letters, so I'd like to see them included as part of the council package. Mr. Mayor, can you see that administration will accomplish that?
I'm not sure.
That we include any comments received on chapter 22 into the council package as an agenda item for January. And I'll be happy to speak to that issue as well.
Okay. Do you have anything else legal or wise?
I don't think so, but Jimmy asked me if I was done, so I wasn't sure if people, they ask me anything, no, I don't think I have anything else, so.
Well, I have a question on this public records complaint. This, Steve, we expect this to be dismissed, is that right?
Yeah, that's right. Preliminary order of dismissal, the way they do things, they're executive. Their staff considers the complaint response, staff makes a decision that it turns, it puts in the form of an order. Staff doesn't have authority to make the order, the board has to decide on the order. So unless the board sort of overrules the staff, you might say it'll be dismissed on Thursday.
And so with that, I would like to provide a public statement that number one, the IPB was an independent neutral party who evaluated the circumstances surrounding my complaint that I filed. And the order, it's very important for the public to go to paragraph six. That's the conclusion, that's the heart of the order that is involved in the situation. And two very, very important facts or statements that were made by IPB are number one, it is understandable why this complaint was filed. That's a statement from IPB. The second item is, as a result of the complaint, the records were released. Those were findings that the IPB made. And when I filed the IPB complaint, I requested five remediation points that the city needed to do in order for me to, to be satisfied with any IPB actions. And as of tonight, four of the five requests for city changes have been made. And I'm very pleased that as a result of these, we have adopted a public policy that is compliant with chapter 22. And it's a rewarding experience after all of the hardship that I went through to have on our ordinance system a public policy access that will provide transparency as to how people and residents can access records from University Heights. A method so that there is no confusion as to what to do with these. And finally, a process for getting these records out to the public within a timeframe. Nowhere in the IPB order will you find that there was any support for the city's position that my request was improperly made at the time I filed it. I was very pleased with that conclusion because that is representative of a position that I took on early on, that the city had an opportunity to correct a certain set of facts and move on from that correction point. So I am pleased with the outcome, that the city has increased our transparency as a result of this situation. And for the record, I want to be very clear that I did not involve the media. The mayor involved the media. One of the considerations that I took for not involving the media was because I did not want this to turn into a spectacle. And I don't have anything else to say, thank you.
Sylvia-
Not to belabor, no, if I might, not to belabor this Sylvia, but I still have to say it was an unnecessary expense by the city. You might feel good about it, this could have been taken care of, I believe, with a telephone call. And that's all I have to say about it.
Jerry, and to your point, no denial of records, no complaint, no cost. Just remember that. No denial of records, no complaint, no cost. That would have been much more better than any of this.
Jerry, Sylvia, excuse me, Jerry, I'm sorry, you done, I had a few questions. I would like to know why you did not contact the city attorney prior to submitting this report to the IPB.
City attorney was present when I made public requests for information, so were you. So it was Jerry, so was council.
And I was, I-
Provided you with the response, I think you need to go back and look at it.
Well, Sylvia-
If you don't have it, I'll recirculate it to you.
Sylvia, I do have the, I did look at the minutes. I did look at that meeting. And in that meeting, which you suggested we had an opportunity, Wally said, I will get back to you. And that's where it ended. He didn't say, I'll get back to the council, he didn't say, I will get back to any of us.
And he did, he quoted you in that email when he got back to me saying, no, I can send you that email tonight as well.
I don't remember receiving that email, so I would really appreciate getting that Sylvia. I do think that you should have been, and as any- I do think as a council member that you should be contacting the city attorney before you start doing anything with the state.
Jim, are you, are you listening to what you're saying?
Yes, I am.
Because you, it's, no, 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 no.
Sylvia, what was your whole objection? Sylvia, this, no Sylvia, you've, you've cost us money and you have cost, yes, you have cost us money. Sylvia, I'll finish, please.
Go ahead.
You've cost us money, you've given us a bad name in, in, in the state. I'm sorry, I feel like you have, and I really don't appreciate the fact that you didn't reach out, you just took off on this thing.
Jim, you were part of an email communication, you did not reach out to me and ask how you could help? Nor did you subsequently talk to the mayor, reach out to the mayor, do any sorts of shuttle diplomacy whatsoever. The lawyer was also present in those communications and in council. How many times does an individual have to beg to get information? You are asking me to not exert or use my legal rights, Jim, that's what you are asking. I cannot believe that a counselor of University Heights is asking an individual in Iowa or anywhere in the United States to not exert the rights, instead to walk away and get trampled on. Absolutely not, I want you to remember. No denial of records, no complaint and no cost. Moreover, if you still don't understand the situation, let's read the IPB's response to the order. Paragraph number six of the order, quote, "It is understandable why this complaint was filed." Period. "The initial response to the records requested indicated to the complainant that the records were not going to be produced." Period. "As a result of the complaint, the records were released within four business days." Period. Unquote. Jim, can you do better than that? The IPB, a neutral, independent party who doesn't know you or me, evaluated the facts and put this in writing. That is pretty embarrassing. If the IPB, who doesn't know you or me, or the mayor, says it's understandable that the complaint was filed.
May I interrupt a second?
Fair enough with the comments, I'm not sure, let me move on.
My, 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 my understanding was that the material was released, it didn't take the, it didn't take the complaint to release. And, you know, what, what really troubles me is that we were on the ground there. And we know that Wally reacted and Wally admitted that error. But that was soluble with phone call or a contact. What I refuse to do is to get involved in this alternate reality that you're creating, Sylvia, that-
You know, please stop being patronizing, Jim.
Please, please Sylvia.
He's patronizing me, where's the- Where's the decline in comments?
I'm saying you created an alternate reality. But whether patronizing or not, you can label it, let's just be objective, but that's what I said.
It's our personal attacks, that's where we are.
You had all kinds of alternatives. You, you had all kinds of alternatives. You're very good at making contacts with people when you want something and you're not. When you want to get somewhere where you might want to go. This is what you did. And I, 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 you had every right to do it. And no one wants to take that right away, but I'll just say once more, you had a very easy route to the goal. You didn't take it for whatever reason and it would have been done without the cost and expense and embarrassment that we all suffered.
I did not, you know, I just want to refocus you all. And I want you to make a note, Jerry and Jim, you're both patronizing, you're both personally attacking me. And now the mayor.
Sylvia, I know, Sylvia, no, 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 I'm not gonna, I'm, I'm, you do not have the floor. This is typical you, where you try to distract attention by saying, by calling people names. You called me divisive when, when basically we asked the council who's the most divisive, it surely wouldn't be me. So I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make one statement and I'm gonna ask you one question. And the statement is, is an initial email from you to me said that you wanted to be included on, on, on all, on, on all correspondence, I believe, from Board of Adjustment. I responded to you and said, Sylvia, I will reach out to you if there is any reason to do that, if there's. And I said, you will receive the same information that the rest of the council receives. And you, I think you used the term, you wanted professional courtesy, you didn't say, you didn't say, uh, public records. Then you, then a couple of days later, you sent me the very same email. And I answered you the same again, I said, Sylvia, I believe I answered your question. And I think I made a remark to the effect that, you know, courtesy is something maybe you need to figure out. I don't remember exactly what I said. Then I get the same email a third time, this time on my, on my AOL. So I guess what I'm thinking is, you know, you keep sending me these same things over and over again. I did not perceive this as being a public records request, okay? And if I made a mistake, that was my error. Now, the question I have for you, is you sent me an email and said, said, I heard something about post Board of Adjustment. And the bottom line is there was nothing post Board of Adjustment. So I asked you at a previous meeting, I said, did you find out anything, you know, from, from that, you know, you know, from that respect, from that aspect of the whole thing? And you said, oh yes, a lot, that was your, that was your response. Now, would you please tell the public exactly what it was that you heard and what you were referring to in that email?
First of all, Mr. Mayor, you have several facts completely confused.
Sylvia, I want you to answer the question. You never answer the questions that people-
That provided you and the city on two, two different occasions, they are part of the public file.
Sylvia, you're not answering the question and this is what you continue to do, you do not have the floor. Either answer the question or we will move on.
You're not letting me speak.
Uh, no, I asked you a specific question and I want a specific answer. You had two allegations brought against you at the last meeting and you didn't answer one of them. All you said, yeah, the, the fact that Terry Gert had, had called me about you. All you said was, I disagree, and then you went on and, you went on and on about all this. You know, you never, you never addressed the issue. So, okay, well, so in other words, you have nothing, you have nothing to present to this body as to what it was that you heard. Is that correct?
I will have an email for you.
No, you need to tell me right now what it is, because if there was something that important, that you heard something, that you demanded information, then I think that it, it had to been important enough that you should remember it now.
Oh, I do, I remember.
Well, then, then share it with this body.
Information on the Beer House that is located on Melrose Avenue at the corner of Lemur, no, Olive and Melrose. I asked you about that property.
That was part of the Board of Adjustment meeting.
And that's public records.
And that is public, so there was, so, so you already had that, so what were you asking me for anything?
I didn't have that information, I asked you for a very specific-
There was not, there was nothing to give you on that. There was absolutely nothing to give you.
That's inaccurate, you produced documents as a result of my request, so what you're saying now is inaccurate.
Well, the only thing I did was that there was a question of easement, there was a question of easement that I didn't get a resolution on.
And a question about who was financing the payment for that easement, correct?
No, absolutely not, absolutely not, that was not discussed whatsoever. That is a figment of somebody's imagination, so. Okay, well, we are going to move on.
Interesting.
Chris?
I sent out my usual clerk report, the updated rental one building permit spreadsheets. As Wally alluded to, I have been working on basement and office, going through stuff, getting some of the treasure stuff looked at as well and will be needing her assistance on this, so I'm happy to answer any questions.
What treasure stuff are you looking at?
We have folders in there, that is records that Lorraine needs to look at and I've been boxing that up on her behalf.
Okay, committee report, Jim?
I just, again, next, Jane, next month, we have the budget due, we begin inputting the data. I think all of you should have a copy of the timeline and your responsibilities within that. I would just, we've got a budget next year and so, if anyone has any questions about their responsibilities on that, I would be happy to answer them now, any questions?
I do, I have some questions on the budget, Jim. We are halfway through the budget season, is that not correct?
No. Well, we're forty, you know, we're through November, that's five out of 12 months, so it's not quite halfway, but yeah.
Quite not yet, okay. And that was important to get that straight, because I get confused, you know, my household I run January to December, I pay taxes on that. And I know the city fiscal calendar is from, what, June, July 1st to June 30th. And I had a question on page 73 of the budget. In particular, I wanted to look at a line item involving, let's see, 73, page PDF, 73, involving a percentage of 163 overage. And I wanted to ask you, why are we spending, why are we over budget on accounting fees? Why are we over budget on legal fees? And why do we have engineering fees that are odd in terms of, we've only, it looks like we've only spent like $135,000 for street improvements, yet we've been paying $35,000 for services? And that's on page 76. So PDF budget, page 73. And I'm looking at percentage of budgets. We made projections of the budget beginning January of this year. And it's now halfway through the year and we've got overages of, legal alone is over by 168% under a category called general government. And very little has been reported under, there's a category that says other. I don't see where litigation is being managed there. So there's a number of concerns about monitoring over these expenses. And I've only asked because we're at the midway and this would be the second year in which we have overages that aren't being supervised or managed and I'm wondering what, what the implications might be.
Well, first of all, legal services, there will be, part of that will be bills due to OUP, which will be reimbursed. We'll re-certify all of that in, with the May submission that we do to the state. Some of that also includes the engineering fees that he's working on with the project, so.
Wait a minute, you're saying that legal fees is commingled with general government to include engineering fees?
No, you asked about engineering fees also, if I, as I recall. Maybe I misheard you around that particular one, but I, we also have engineering fees and some of those may be used. So those are the ones that we will re, we'll look at at the May recertification and when we have to submit the budget for May, I think it's May 15th next year, for this year's budget, so. There'll be things that we have to take a look at and, and do.
Now, under engineering, I thought there was an odd expenditure, it's an upside down triangle in my opinion. There's $35,000 or so dollars worth of services that have been paid out with what I thought was a hilarious amount of only $135 or $85 that have been invested in actual improvements. And it, it's basically saying that we spent, what, 130, 100 bucks or so on improvements, yet we're paying up services about 30 some thousand dollars and I didn't understand that relationship.
Well, part of that, Josiah may want to respond to that, but I would, I would venture that part of that is for building permits that we were, we were over surplus last year, we had building permits paid and some of these are now charged, that would be against building. Those building permits from last year, which I pointed out to the, pointed out to the council that this, we have to look at this as a two-year budget because of the large, over $100,000 worth of building permits we got last year. And since this is a cash-only budget, which is only allowed by the state, you cannot accrue, you have to, some year, we had a fairly so a significant surplus and that this year we're gonna be very, very tight.
Well, if you-
And Josiah, you might want to add that, if my interpretation-
I can confirm there's a good portion of that's the OUP items.
Here's what would make me comfortable at this point, being mid-year and budget, being that, you know, all of us, well, Dottie, myself and the mayor went to a training in January with the League of Cities. And one of the things that they emphasized very, very carefully to the audience was that the budget is owned by all counselors. The budget is not owned by any individual chair or individual or groups of people, it's owned by everyone. So at that, at this point- So at that, at this point, I think what would make me comfortable is understanding a breakdown where these costs are being generated. So I will work with Treasury, Jim, if there is no objection from anyone on council, to, to review some of these expenditures and try to figure out what, segregate out what is one university place, to actually figure out where exactly are we as a town coming down with our own expenses.
I, I, yeah, I, I have some questions also, but I would prefer if we all put our questions in writing, so the appropriate time can be taken for the analysis by Jim or whomever else is involved, to answer these questions, so they can give a thorough view of it, rather than from the hip.
I'm not shooting from the hip, Jerry. I'm, I'm ready to ask my questions, and I will do so on my own timing.
Why don't you put them in a mighty, why don't you put them in writing?
Why do I have to?
Because you will be a lot safer in writing than you are up close and personal.
If you have any questions, just submit them to Lori by email.
I'm, well, I have time.
Jim, do you have anything for? Jerry, anything else?
Yeah, I mean, if anybody really wants the details to be answered, they will submit a specific question, so that that answer can be specifically addressed. And that's what I would suggest process be. And it would take a lot less time to do meetings.
Treasurers report payment of bills. Can I have a motion to pay the warrants?
Move to a dot, dot the warrants is listed.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? All opposed? Okay. Okay, Chris? Police report?
Yeah, I don't have much to add unless you have questions. Sorry, I didn't email it. I didn't know if some of that information should all be kept by the city councilors and circulated around. Let me know if you have any questions.
Chris, I just wanted to ask you, if you had an opportunity to look at the police signs that Josiah circulated, and do you have an opinion as head of the department now as to what kind of signage you think would be best?
Yeah, like the, I believe they were the first two. I mentioned police vehicle, one of them towing. They just seem the most standard to me, from what I've seen. It'd be clear.
So just something simple like police parking, rather than?
Yeah, the, one of them said police parking, only all others to be towed. And then the one below that just said, police parking. To me, it's just the most straightforward and consistent with every agency.
But you prefer the one with the towing on it, then?
I don't really have a pressing preference, either one of those two. Towing would make sense, if somebody dared to park in a police spot.
I also think, just saying police is best, and not university heights or anything of that nature, just police. It's clear and simpler.
Yeah, I agree.
So, one, one thing, and after signs, I sent an email around, sometimes I'm not sure if everybody is just Wally. But I think the signs, I think we should consider, and I will, I will, as always, specify that I have a conflict drop, or maybe not so much, but we're very near with Knight Barn. And if we do, we will be, and others should be very sensitive to the aesthetics of the signs. And I think there's a way to make those signs more than just standard police signs, and make them conform with the aesthetics of the building. And I would ask that we consider that, and maybe even talk to Kevin Monson about it to see what he thinks, and to make sure legally that it is appropriate. That a sign that conforms to the aesthetics could, you know, have a good deal of appeal, and that everybody there know that everybody is taking.
Okay. Jerry, when, when are you going to be back in town?
Sunday.
Sunday? How about if you, how about if you take, take over this, this project, decide what the signs are, talk to Chris, and talk to Kevin, and just kind of decide, you know, what you think, what you think is the best and what's best for the police?
Well, I, I think as long as I'm part of the police oversight, along with Jerry, that I should be part of it.
Well, I was, that was, the next thing was coming out of my mouth, so, so, okay.
Sure, I'd very much like to do that.
Okay, very good, thank you. Okay.
Thank you. And then the other thing I had is, there was some discussion about the lockers, Wally, and is that, and to bring those up here or not?
Yeah, there's time for that.
Right now, yeah.
There's been a discussion of bought some expensive police lockers because they would be essential in order to protect us from our own liability if we don't have them. They've been recommended, and I think that if speeding violation is going to protect us somehow, I, I am, lockers as well as both, that we should all do.
Are you there, Jerry?
I am.
Okay, we, we kind of lost you there for a minute. We didn't hear the last couple of things you said.
Are you using this speaker function, Jerry, or are you just speaking right into the phone?
Get her?
I think so.
Okay. Yeah, no, this isn't better for me, but I will do it. No, I, there was a, a consideration of those lockers, the, the police lockers, for what I believe was a cost of $13,500. Is that correct?
No, the cost, Clayton's got the cost down to $11,449.12.
Right. And I understand that they are the kind of lockers that make everything secure and will protect us from liability of anybody getting in there and taking them from lockers that aren't as secure, like weapons or ammunition or something. If that is all correct, I think it's best to, again, to purchase these lockers. If we have a police force and they need to feel secure, and the city needs to be secure, I think we need to do it.
Dottie, have you talked to Clayton about these at all? Do you know?
Have you talked to Clayton?
No.
You've talked to Clayton?
No, Dottie, have you talked to Clayton?
No, Clayton, well, I have, in the sense that he explained to me what they were and, and how the, the safest way to do it would be to get the secure lockers, and that's what the police also believe, based on their information in their culture.
Yeah, and he also talked about the fact that our insurance rates may be less just because of decreased liability, more secure, less liability.
Yeah.
And he, he sent around a diagram or, or a rendering of all those lockers. Did everybody get that?
Yes.
I didn't get it.
And for the benefit of the public and the council, I also want to remind you that in November, Clayton also provided this council with a write-up that was emailed to all of you, saying that he would personally recommend that instead of the city purchasing the most expensive chair, that we go with the interlbers to purchase the lockers. So council noted back in November on that resolution allocating funds on the, on the premise that that package that was being approved included money allocated for certain lockers that were yet to be determined.
Are you talking about the $31,000?
Correct.
No, that, that did not include the lockers and the $31,000.
It included it in the email that this council relied on.
No, I didn't, I don't see that. But, but no, that specifically was $31,000 that I added, the cost of the furniture, the draper's up. That's where I came up with that figure.
The, also, it was my understanding from Clayton that the chair that was the most expensive or best was the one with the broad seat and the very secure structure. And given the fact that we're going to have so many people in and out of our facility with different sizes, shapes, and treatment of, of utilities, that it would be cost-effective to have the more secure, best chair that is currently having no warranty problems, as Clayton said. So I assume that's the chair that has been ordered.
As, as far as I know, the council decided, he got feedback on which chair, and that was the one that we went with. And I, and I was surprised at your email, because I mean, I'd already given him the check for it.
Well, it was at the police station, and it was the, clearly, everybody that went through, had pointed out that was a chair. So that was the best chair.
So I, in my opinion, you'd have to ask him, but I mean, I don't, because I.
You could ask him. That is the chair that he's purchasing.
Pardon?
The best one.
He is?
Yes, the one that we all preferred was the one that he was, was purchasing.
And it's the intermediate one, not the highest?
It's a Leland, it's a Leland chair.
I understand. No, but it's not the one that has the T back.
Dongia was the, was more expensive, but the Leland was the one that we all saw here, yes.
Right, and as a result of that, it shifted dollars, it released freed up money.
Well, anyhow, the bottom line, I think, is we need the security lockers, so there'll be money somewhere, somehow.
Well, I think we have enough money, because his original, his original quote was like $47,000, and then we came up with 37, or 31 for the rest of it. And I think we actually, we're actually under that a little bit. I didn't add about that, we're actually under that 31. So there should be, there should be enough funds to buy these, to buy these lockers. Quite honestly, I was, I, I didn't think it was a good idea, because I thought they were too expensive, but I, everybody else is in disagreement with me, and I, so I, you know, I defer to everybody's opinion, so.
By the way, Wally, I, I just want to be very clear that that three, that that funding line was a retainer for preliminary orders. Jim, the budget is actually a bit larger, it's by another, what, 10K or so?
We're at 41. Yeah.
Yeah.
And I, I can find others.
Wally is saying that because it's under 30, 31.
No, we're fine.
No, we're fine, we're fine, yeah. I just want to make sure that we're not making additional decisions that are impacting the budget that there's money for.
I'm just adding, these are the three steps with three checks, and I'm coming up with 20, 25, about 28,4 is what, is, is what we had. So we're like 3,000, you know, $2,500 under what we, what we said we could spend, so.
No, no, okay, that's exactly what it was.
For the furniture and for the, and for the drapers.
Well, you've heard that Jim just said that the amount is 41. That's the total final.
Total amount is 41.
Total amount is 41.
Total, including the stuff from the police.
41, that's right. Not 41, 41.
Okay, well, I just, you know, yeah, I know, yeah.
No, I clear about all that. We're fine.
Because I just want to make sure that we're investing as we all agree.
So are we okay with the lockers that I found is heightened?
Okay, so, someone, please make a motion to buy these lockers at $11,449.12.
I will move to purchase the secure police lockers.
Second.
Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye? Might, I can go later, okay. Dottie, do you have anything for, anything else?
Oh, yes, I do.
Hold on, I'm sorry to interrupt, but I don't think community protection. I have a question to ask both Dottie and Jerry Zerman. Before coming to council, there was a letter that I don't think was distributed through the city clerk, but was distributed to all of council involving an individual by the name of Benjamin Khan, and allegations of internal affair complaints and a specific request. So I am going to ask that the mayor honor that request, because I don't know why.
No, I, I discussed this with Steve. I'm going to, I don't, I just heard about this today.
I do, too, so I must.
Now, let me finish. I am going to meet with Ken and with Jake, and I'm going to get the facts, because they basically filled, they told me about something three or four weeks ago, and all they said was that Jake misspoke at a trial because he hadn't looked at the video. I don't know exactly what it was. Until I know what's, what's, what we're doing with this, we're going to defer on this letter. And I ran that by Steve, and that's what we're going to do. I'm not sure, how did you, where did this letter come from? Where did you get it?
It's regulated to all of council.
Just sent it through the email.
Right, and, and because of the serious nature of the allegations being raised in that letter, I want to, I want to see if council will be amenable to putting together a special meeting, because Ken Stanley is leaving in February 1, and he was like.
Sylvia, I'm going to meet with him this week. We're going to find out what's, what, what happened on this, and, and we are going, and we are going to, we're going to figure out what we're going to do, okay? And there's no, we can't resolve one thing with this letter by sitting here talking about it.
No, we can't, but we can do a special meeting, so that we can all find out together.
Well, we, we will find out. I mean, I don't know, if, if the council wants to have a special meeting.
Wally, you know.
Sylvia, you are out of order.
Excuse me, wait a minute, let me.
Thank you.
I think I'm not going to be dictated by an individual. He sent a letter, we will take our time and work on it, as far as I'm concerned. But I don't feel a need for a special meeting until we get more data and more facts around this thing. And so I, and there's no, I see no rush to do this. And so I would only suggest, I would only suggest that we look at this, we get data, and then we look at it, and we look at it again at the January meeting.
That's precisely what I mean. I don't, I hadn't had a timeline, but that's, Ken's not back till Wednesday, I'm gone tomorrow, and won't be back until Thursday later in the afternoon. So once we figure out what's, what's going on with this, then, and I will, I mean, I don't, I don't keep these things away from council. I share things with council when these things go, and I will share what, this with council when we know what's going on, but I don't know what's going.
As, as long as I am referenced in his email here, and some statement I made in the council meeting, I, I would like to be included with you.
I think that's fine.
It was my understanding, and that was what I was referencing here, was that Ken was talking about some politic, some police offense that this person had perpetrated, and that he was requesting a multiplicity of records going back years and years, which would have been very, very, very costly, and we don't even have records like that easily accessible.
Well, he, well, he's already been given these records. I mean, he has, he has them already, so all he wanted was like records of speeding tickets or.
That was the basis on which I referred to that.
What do you know about this internal affair?
I don't know anything about that. All I know is my comment was in regard to the multiplicity of requests and the cost.
That's, that's, so, anyway, like I said, we, we got to sit down and talk about this.
Would I do something?
Yes, go ahead.
Yeah, this, this, this whole situation has implications, and I'm not sure what the timetable is or should be. Steve said he was going to look into what the legal posture of this is now, and I'm wondering if Steve did that. Do you know what the legal posture is, Steve?
In terms of the criminal case, the court denied this, this person's appeal on the 30th of November, but I believe it gave him, like, stayed, stayed implementation of the court's decision to give him the opportunity to decide if he wanted to appeal, or seek a writ of suit, sorry. He doesn't have any right to appeal at this point, yeah.
Yeah, I, and, and he's talked about the writs and all of that, but this, this raises some, I think, longer-term problems than we can deal with tonight and maybe even next time. This is a, a one-off case, but, and it's easy to say the judicial system has taken its course, and so be it, we're going to leave it alone, we have no right to do it. But this had, this gave me the opportunity to look over a ton of records that I otherwise never would have looked at, which were. looked at, which were the arrests over years. And I think we have to come to grips with what the mission of our police force is, and whether, and what we want it to be. And that's a longer conversation. That said, this has cost us, I think, and I don't know exactly how much, Steve will have some indication of that, this has cost us a whole bunch of money. As I said, I don't know how much, and will cost us more if he goes beyond where he has already gone.
How much have we spent?
If this, if this in effect was a stop that was not the best stop, and we're spending this kind of money on it, we have to reconsider our policies.
I agree with that. More importantly, what concerns me, what gives me urgency on addressing this issue, is that there is an allegation of an internal affairs complaint. And I have not heard about it until I got this email in writing explaining and providing this information. So, I think it's really important that we take a sense of urgency to address what does the city do when there's allegations of a very important nature against an officer in its police force. I don't think waiting and dragging our feet serves a public interest, and we just at least need to have a process around this, and to bring it to conclusion for good, bad, or indifferent.
Steve, do you have any, have you had any insight into those kinds of complaints? I mean-
This particular complaint, the lawyer for this individual contacted us, contacted me to ask if there was a process for filing a complaint with the department against an officer. I contacted Ken, Ken said have him write me a letter. The lawyer did write him a letter. That was mid-November. I wrote a letter to the council on the, I think it was the twenty-third of November, or I'm sorry, I wrote a letter to Ken on the twenty-third of November. I copied the council, and I said, among other things, in light of your resignation and just the transition and this internal affairs complaint, I think you should, you know, talk to the council, the police committee about that. So, I did inform the council about that on the twenty-third of November. And then, and I spoke with Ken about it, and he said he would evaluate, do whatever he does with that kind of a complaint, and issue a response. And I haven't received one yet. I got a letter or an email from the lawyer for this individual yesterday or today, asking just to follow up, and I did follow up with Ken. I learned that he was out of it, and would be back tomorrow, and I informed the other lawyer. So, that's, I guess, what I know about it.
Okay.
And I know something about the circumstances in terms of the trial and all that stuff, too, but, I mean, so I can share that if you want.
I was just going to add that, I mean, I definitely believe in a process is important. I would say that you would find most police departments, the process is an internal investigation done by Internal Affairs Department or in small police departments, the chief of police. Complaints, I'm not going to say are common, but they happen a lot, and are easily reviewed. And I've handled a handful, and all of them have been mostly unfounded. It's pretty easy to review a lot of those with body camera and see whether the allegations are true or not. Some of them definitely, I mean, all of them merit looking at, but some of them, and many of them are a person who is, you know, agitated by law enforcement contact, which is kind of the nature of law enforcement at times. So, I guess I would say I would caution an overreaction to it, saying that you have to have every internal investigation allegation brought before council. That seems a little extreme to me. Not that openness and review is a bad thing, but just in that case, I would caution it.
I think, I just think the council should have access to what's being reviewed internally, and choose the ones they want to be involved in.
That's, that's, he said that we should have access to, you know, what reviews are taking place, and they can choose as a council which one you want to be involved in, and maybe that's the appropriate response. My concern here is that we have no process, and it's, and we're about to, our key investigator is about to leave in February.
Well, I think it's a mission of the police department and our new temporary chief to work with us. Certainly, it should be Jerry and me in the beginning, as long as we're supposed to be involved primarily with the police, and then bring our findings back to council.
Precisely, yeah.
I would like to ask if you can please make an effort, actually, no, I'm going to ask that you please let me know when the meeting to discuss this with the officers will take place, so that I can make myself available for it as well, please. I'm interested in this particular.
We cannot have, that's right, we cannot have three councils at a meeting, so-
Who's now involved?
Jerry and Dottie.
Well, Jerry, are you certain that you'll be attending?
You can't hear that.
I will be attending.
Okay, you take care, you and Dottie take care, all right.
Okay.
You said, if, you asked if I had any of this. Yes, I do have some comments to make. I hate to take the time, but I've been silent like a mouse, so I'm going to talk for a few minutes. On November thirtieth, we had a public hearing, a public forum at University Club, and the purpose of that was to provide a final opportunity for the public input on the living roadways and the community visioning project that we've been involved in all year long, since January of 2016. And throughout that time, we had twelve public meetings. Our program is involved with the Department of Transportation, Trees Forever, Iowa State Architectural, and the Iowa State Extension Division. And the purpose of the meeting was to notice by certified letter, return, receipt, requested, all the property owners on Melrose, so they had an opportunity to come and raise their comments or objections about our projected Melrose streetscape. The meeting was held, the council was there, and there was not anyone who was a property owner on Melrose. One university resident did attend, and she was concerned about the sidewalks on Melrose. And we assured her that the sidewalks would not be impacted at that particular location for the streetscape that we were envisioning. The citizens of University Heights decided that we needed to put a new phase on Melrose, because it is an arterial road, and we wanted to make it safer and improve the trafficking for both motor vehicles and cyclists and pedestrians for all ages and abilities. It was the first priority that all the city citizens in University Heights, and the second priority was the Little Triangle Park. So, the council agreed to go forward with the streetscape program, and gave me, as long as I was the director of the visioning project, authority to begin to seek out grant funding, both with MCO JP as well as other grant sources. So, I'm going to be moving forward on doing that. And also, Rotary has expressed interest in the Triangle Park, and they have some ideas about possibly some funding and some support to improve our little park there across, makes care of the visioning. And I wanted to make a comment also on streets and sidewalks before I'm finished. I have had complaints from citizens who have been dumped from the city transit bus on the west side of Sunset across from Marietta. There's, it's grassy, it gets wet and slick, there's a hill. When it's icy, people stumble and fall. And so, I said to Josiah, why don't we put a concrete pad there? And he explained to me that we have a hill, and that it's not structurally sound to put concrete there. And so, he will further explain in his report, but we have been working with Iowa City Transit and with Grand View Court, and then, of course, University Heights, to see if we could relocate the bus stops. There are so many between Oak Crest and Marietta. I believe there are four. And maybe we could relocate them and work with Grand View, so that we would have a bus stop on Grand View that would be also a shelter, so that we might actually have a concrete pad, a bus stop and shelter all in the same place. So, with that, I hope that that comes to fruition. We're working at this very moment, trying to bring the parties together and see what we can all share. So, Josiah, I think it's your report next.
Yeah, I did touch on that in the written report, and I guess to highlight that, like Dottie said, we proposed this idea to the Grand View Board to get their feedback. Is this something they'd be willing to work with the city? And the reason we have to go to them is because, actually, the sidewalk that sits in front of the Grand View property there in Sunset, it's actually back behind the city's right wing. So, in order to get to the sidewalk, with anything like that, even if you put a bus pad, I think, back where it is now, you still need to work with them to get access across the property, so. They said they'd get us back some feedback yet this month, like, yes, we're, yeah, this would be great, we're really for it, we want to work with you, or we don't, or yes, but, so, I think the initial feedback we got from their property management was I thought it was something they'd probably be interested in, but they just want to get a formal message from their board.
Yeah, and Josiah provided them also with all of the information and the specs, so they're going to be looking at it.
The other item I was going to touch on from my report was the Public Improvements Project at One University Place. As Jeff mentioned, they were installing some signs today. There's a couple items on their punch list, like you have some signs to get installed still, and so it sounds like he's working towards that. They're also finishing up some touches on the traffic signal poles at the base. It sounds like they're going to do that yet this week. Then the rest of the items were, are probably going to just be a verification next spring. A lot of the areas that were torn up, they restored with sod or seed or plantings. And since that happened so late in the year, we'll have to just check it out again this spring and make sure it did take before we want to do a final sign off.
Did your snap taste though? Mike, you government?
Got the usual, got the usual report there, nothing, nothing too interesting or exciting. Do you want to mention that City Channel Four has said that it is obvious that our viewership of our web stream has migrated over to YouTube. We were the first city government that they moved over onto the new City Channel Four YouTube channel, and our folks are there, and we are their highest rated programs. And I said that's because we look so good in high resolution. The other thing I have, I attached information, we were notified after last, or right before last month's meeting, and didn't get the information until afterwards. We were renewed as a bronze level bicycle-friendly community by the League of American Bicycleists. I attached the press release that we put out of it. It used to be that we were the smallest city in America that had league status. We are now the second smallest city in America with league status. There is an island in Georgia that got named as a bronze level, and they only have eight hundred people, so. We are still one of only eight in the state of Iowa. Correville just won their first bronze level designation. I put a link to our report card, which is what the league sends us to say, here's how we score you, here's what it would take for you to get to the next level. I think, Dottie, the things that you've talked about with visioning. To be honest, our scores don't look very good until you get to ridership. And the average silver level city has three point five percent ridership, and we have ten point four. So, we, all we need to do is make some infrastructure improvements, we need to do some policy improvements.
What type of policy improvements?
Complete Streets policy would be part of it, as well as, with complete streets policy, what you're doing when you're repairing roadways, making sure that you're accommodating bicycle transportation. The NASH TO guidelines for bike racks, there's a lot of little things like that. It's not a big deal. I've got, I'll start, after the new year, I'll start introducing some of those kinds of things for us to look at.
I just wanted to comment, too, that until we can separate the cyclists from the trap, the vehicle traffic, some of the residents have complained about the cyclists not being visible, because they haven't, they either don't have fluorescent clothing, or they don't have adequate lighting, which I believe the safe code requires. So, I'm wondering, you know, how we could be tutorial in-
As a biker, I can say drivers need to play a lot closer attention. But anyway, I'm not going to, I'm not going to go there with that. But yeah, I understand, I understand what you're saying. Education efforts are a part of the things that the league scores us on, and that's something that we participate with, think bicycles in Johnson County regularly, and that's, our score is there. I was going to add one last thing. Basically, take a look at the report card. I think that with some minimum, oh, the other thing is, having bike-friendly businesses in town, and I think with One University Place opening up, that's going to be a great opportunity for us, as well as Stella, to say, hey, ride in on your bike, get a five percent discount. If there are businesses that do that, those are the kind of things that the league looks at, too. So, I, in seventeen, I'll have, I'll have specific suggestions that'll, I think, will move us on a path towards silver.
What about bike, a bike rack at One University Place?
There are two already.
Okay, all right.
Yeah, I'd like to see them bigger, but it's a start. So, that's all I had.
Yes, I'd like to announce that we are, that actually, the luminaries, Susan Wells is helping me to coordinate the luminaries again this year, and she's been a fantastic help. We took inventory of what supplies were carried over from last year. I do want to acknowledge John McClure's wonderful donation of twenty-some lighters. But if the, so here's the deal, we have the Saturday, December thirty-first, scheduled for the luminaries in University Heights. We have enough luminaries to light Melrose and Sunset, but we need ten volunteers at minimum to help with this project. If not, we will not be able to carry through with the project, and so we may have to be a cancellation. We're hoping that that will not be the case. We're hoping that we'll have warm weather, so please reserve your Saturday evening to come and give a try to the luminary walk, especially now that we have One University Place up and running. It'll be kind of nice to have a change of scene on that side of the street. And otherwise, we'll have plenty of supplies to work with, and we'll, you'll contact me or Susan Wells. And actually, we have Susan Wells' email, so just contact me, and we'll get moving with that. So, Mike, I'm going to ask that you please place a, maybe last year's luminary message and picture on the city website, as well as distributed on the city email notice that you send out.
What time do you want volunteers?
We're looking at just different shifts for a morning setup, evening lighting, and then Sunday cleanup in the morning. and then Sunday cleanup in the morning.
Motion for adjournment?
No, not yet. I did want to provide, Mike, who is very likely to include, what is it, the summary of tonight's council meeting with a copy of Section Six of the IPB preliminary order, so that there is no question as to what gets reported on the city newsletter. Thank you.
Sylvia, will you please send me the email where you, where you state that we did not pay attention to your request?
Sure.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you for asking.
Now, do we have a motion for adjournment?
Is that moved?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.